Okay. Well, I want to welcome everyone to the April 29th meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. We're holding our meeting electronically to comply with the state of Minnesota stay-at-home order and to assure the safety of all residents and staff. All members of the Planning Commission's staff and presenters are participating from their, by video, by, from their home or their offices. This is our Planning Commission's second meeting by online video call, and I think we now want to, I think we're now starting to think of it as must-see PC. Before I begin, I, again, I want to thank the staff for just doing an outstanding job, of the City of Edina, the staff of the City of Edina for doing an outstanding job of adapting to these unexpected circumstances and making, and making all this work. I also want to thank our community because we've seen tremendous response to submitting comments through our online methods. So we've had a lot of changes in how these hearings are held, and residents of Edina have done a very nice job of submitting their comments electronically, in writing, or by voicemail. Also, before we begin, I just want to cover a few, you know, unique ground rules to this kind of meeting that we don't always, that we don't necessarily have when we have our traditional meeting in person. First of all, as I, as I mentioned, that, you know, we're continuing to want individual participation from the residents and citizens of Edina. You know, we've been collecting a lot of feedback, and all comments that were received have been read, and we very well may refer, if not to the specific comments, to some of the, to the concepts that were contained in some of those comments throughout the meeting tonight. And so, thank you to everyone. And everyone, you know, all feedback is received regardless of how you submitted, excuse me, all feedback that's submitted, all feedbacks that's received is considered equally regardless of the method of submitting the feedback. Tonight, we have three public hearings. The agenda has four, but I'll get to that in just a moment. We have three public hearings. Anyone who wants to participate in the public hearing section of tonight's three items can do so by calling 1-800-374-0221. And the conference ID number is 766-0588. You will be given three minutes to speak. We'll let you know, if you're, if you're going over three minutes, we will, you will probably be cut off, just for fairness. We ask, if you, if you've already provided feedback, there's no need to call in. We have received your feedback. Also, if you do have feedback, we ask that you not duplicate comments that have already been received. So please call if you have another perspective, but just to say this, you know, it doesn't do us, doesn't help us to get repeated comments that are the same. Also, we may, because of the, the way technology works, will probably be, there'll be slight delays in moving between segments of our meeting, as we move from public hearing to Planning Commission discussion, just to allow the delays to be taken care of. If you're not speaking, please try to keep your, your microphone on mute, and we will call you at the time. So, thanks again for your, everyone, for your patience and for your cooperation as we've been working through these issues. You know, we're learning. We hope to do better each time we do this. So that said, I think I'd like to turn this over to Staff Member Olson to do roll call.
Mr. Chairman, could you repeat that 1-800 number, please? I had a couple of people calling.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
This is Blaz Razul, one of the participants.
And how can I help you, Mr. Razul?
I, um, could you repeat the 1-800 number?
Okay, well, you don't need it, of course, but the, and I will repeat it before each public hearing, but the num, the number is 1-800-374-0221. And one thing that I'd like to also say is that during the public hearing section, when we normally have public hearings, they're presentations, basically, and then at the end of the public hearing section, we in the Planning Commission may or may not bring up anything that was raised during public hearing. So because we're doing these phone things, it feels a little bit more like a phone conversation. So I just want to caution everyone who does call in for a public hearing, that it really is a presentation. It's not a, it's not a question-and-answer session. So we're just going to take your, your comments and move to the next commenter. And then at the conclusion, if there's anything to be responded to, Commission, staff, or the applicant will respond at that time. So with that said, Staff Member Olson, are you ready to do roll?
I am. Thank you, Chair Nemirov. To ensure an accurate roll call, I will call all Commissioners, regardless if I see them or not, on WebEx. Commissioner Douglas.
Present.
Commissioner Agnew.
Present.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson. Commissioner Melton. Commissioner Velavuli. Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Thorson. Commissioner Berube.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Chair Nemirov.
Here. Thank you. So that takes us to our meeting agenda. Everyone on the Planning Commission has received electronically. It's available on the city's website. There is a change for tonight's agenda from the one that was previously. We originally had four public hearings, but now we're only having three. There was an item for 4248 Alden Drive that is being continued to the May 13th meeting. With that said, is there, are there any other changes to the, that we should make to the agenda?
Chair Nemirov, this is Liz Olson. If you could motion to approve the continuation of that public hearing to May 13th for Alden Drive, please?
Certainly. Uh, I will make a motion myself, and then if anyone will second, we'll take a roll vote. We're going to do a roll vote for everything, including a German, by the way.
Second.
Liz, could you do a roll, please?
Commissioner Douglas.
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett.
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Berube.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Chair Nemirov.
Aye. And then, could I get, thank you, and then could we get a motion, unless there's any changes for the, uh, today's agenda, other than that, could I get a motion to approve that, please?
I'd like to approve the agenda.
And a second. Liz, could you do a, a roll for the approval of the agenda?
Commissioner Douglas.
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett.
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Berube.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Chair Nemirov.
Aye. That passes. The next item are the minutes from our last meeting, April 15th. Has everyone had a chance to review? Does anyone have any comments to those or changes?
I move to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
My second.
Commissioner Douglas.
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett.
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Berube.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Chair Nemirov.
Aye. Thanks, you, Liz. So that takes us to the public hearing section. As we mentioned, the first matter is that variance on Alden, that is being continued to May 13th. So that takes us to our second matter, which is a first-floor height variance for a new home at Woodland Circle. I believe Chris Ocker of Staff is presenting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Take it away.
Thank you, Chair Nemirov. Hello, I'm Chris Ocker with the Planning Department. This is a variance request for 1.9 feet. It's a first-floor height variance for a new home at 89 Woodland Circle. Subject property is located in the southeast corner of Woodland Circle in Woodland Lane, as highlighted. The existing property consists of a Rambler with an attached garage that backs up to Minnehaha Creek. This is a survey of the existing property and the home that's currently on the property. This is a rendering survey of the proposed home in red, the outline of the proposed home in red, and the existing home outlined in black. The existing property is not conforming in two respects. The existing home is currently closer to the Westerly lot line than is allowed. The minimum setback is actually set up by the home that's located to the south, and that's a little over 30 feet. And the subject home is a little over 21 feet away, so it's currently too close to that Westerly lot line. The basement elevation is also lower than the flood protection elevation. The property is in the flood zone and is non-compliant in terms of the basement elevation. This is the floor plan of the basement, the main floor plan, the second floor plan, and then the new elevations of the home to be located on the property. The basement elevation currently is at 861.65. The proposed elevation of the basement will be at 862.1, so it will be elevated a little less than six inches above the existing basement elevation to bring it up and out of the flood zone. The home will also be pushed further back on the lot, so the garage portion, which will be closer to Woodland Lane, will actually maintain the required setbacks. So the new home will add, will be in conformance with the requirements that the existing home is in non-compliance of. But the property owners are requesting a variance for, though, is the new first-floor elevation, which the ordinance requires that the new first floor be no higher than one foot above the existing home, and they would like to elevate it 2.91 feet above the, what's existing currently, so they're asking for a variance of 1.91 feet. Here are the other elevations along the side and around the corner towards the rear, and then this is the elevation along Woodland Lane. The home, even given the fact that it will be elevated 2.91 feet for the first floor above what's existing there currently, the overall height is actually a little bit, it's a little bit less than four and a half feet lower than it could be. The home could be four and a half feet taller than what they're proposing right now. So in terms of overall height, the house is within the height requirements. However, they are asking for a 1.91-foot variance from that first-floor height. What that will allow them to do is that they will have then eight-foot-10-inch ceilings in the basement, and then they will have standard 20-inch floor trusses to the first floor in order to gain some extra height in the basement. This shows you that eight-foot-10-inch ceiling height, and then the standard floor trusses. So this, then, are photographs along the street, house to the east, and then as you go down to where the existing house is, and around the corner, the house that is fronting Woodland Lane. And this gives you a view of the new home in context with that home that's, that's to the east. And then also, the lower rendering shows you that house that's being proposed with the existing home imposed upon it, so you can see that it is a two-story home. It is taller than the existing Rambler, but again, it's well within the overall height requirements that the zoning ordinance allows for. And then as you round the corner, you have the view of the new home, two-story home, and the new adjacent home that's directly to the south. And again, it'll be a two-story home as opposed to the single-story that's currently there. The engineering department has looked at the plans. In fact, the applicant worked with the engineering department prior to planning, having contact with the applicant in terms of the building plan, so they initially worked with the engineering department to look at the stormwater management of the property, and there is a memo that was included in your packets that addresses that. So from a variance standpoint, Staff believes the proposal meets the criteria for a variance to allow the first-floor elevation 2.9 feet, 91 feet higher than the existing home with a variance of 1.91 feet, based on the fact that it complies with all of the current ordinance requirements, with the exception of the first-floor elevation. It's actually improving upon two non-comformities that are in existence currently, one of which is a goal of the city to bring that basement elevation up at, to the flood protection elevation, which the new construction will do. The variance allows the new home to be elevated out of the flood zone while still maintaining the overall height requirement. It's well within the height requirement of the ordinance. It's about four and a half feet lower than it could be, and the proposed home design reflects the character of the neighborhood. The home adjacent, along with Woodland Lane, is a two-story home. There are other two-story homes within the vicinity. Staff does recommend approval of the variance request, and I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Do any members of the Planning Commission have any questions for Chris? Seeing and hearing none. With the, I'll invite the applicant to speak. Would the applicant like to speak? Please, for the people on, just please identify yourself and your role. If you're the applicant.
Hi, this is Chris. Sorry, this is Chris Volker and Anna. We're the owners of 89 Woodland, and I just want to say thank you to the Planning Commission as well as Chris Ocker for considering our application. We currently live in Edina and grew our current home and looking to stay in Edina with our kids in the, the school system. We fell in love with the neighborhood and really worked closely with the city to, to design a home that we felt fit in with the neighborhood. So just appreciate your, your consideration. We don't have a presentation. We think Chris's report summarized it well. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Volker. Did, was your architect going to present tonight?
He's on the phone, but he texted us and said he might be having trouble speaking, but we can relay any questions via text if there's any questions for the architect.
Okay. Do any members, with that, do any members of the Planning Commission have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Well, hold on. Now we will go to the public hearing section, and that's in which members of the public can speak. As I mentioned earlier, you have three minutes to speak, and it's not a question-and-answer, but, you know, and we'll let you know when you're approaching the end of the time. If you're watching tonight and you'd like to call in on this matter, the number is 1-800-374-0221. Conference ID is 766-0588. And as I used to say, we're, we'll pause a moment and let our lines fill.
Chair Nemirov, this is Communications Director Jennifer Bennerott. At this point, we do not have anyone on the call, but I would encourage you to hang on the line for another minute or so before moving on, in case someone does decide to join us by call.
Yeah, thanks, Jennifer. And, you know, we have gotten feedback. You don't have to call in, particularly if it's something that you think's been addressed already. Oh, may, maybe we need, like, someone spinning plates or juggling to keep the audience entertained. All right, Commissioner Bennett is going to juggle, air juggle. Yeah. Well, with that said, maybe we'll close the public hearing. Jennifer, let us know if anyone does call in, but could I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I second.
Liz, could you do a roll, please?
Commissioner Douglas.
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett.
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Berube. Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Chair Nemirov.
Aye. Well, so that, that brings us to the Planning Commission for a discussion period. You know, and if you have additional questions, bring them up, but does anyone on the Planning Commission wish to raise any comments about this matter?
In this type of situation, one of the things that I really take into consideration is the fact that the overall height of the house is well within compliance. I think from the street, it seems pretty irrelevant if one story is higher or out of code, particularly in this situation where it's an issue of getting out of the flood zone. If they were asking for a variance on height overall, I think it would be worth a further discussion and maybe more in-depth in this type of situation where they're not asking for a variance on the height overall. It seems pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Sheila. Does anyone else have any comments about this matter? Does anyone wish to make a motion in one way or another?
I move to approve the variance for...
Thank you, Jerry. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Liz, we have a motion and a second. Could you do the roll, please?
Commissioner Douglas.
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett.
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Berube.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Chair Nemirov.
Aye. The motion passes. And thank you, and that takes us to our next agenda item, really, concludes this matter. And that is, the next agenda item is a, excuse me, I didn't, I didn't do my voice practice tonight, my enunciation practice. It's a preliminary plat with multiple variances at 7413 and 7425 York Terrace for Mr. Blaz Razul. And I believe that Community Development Director Kerry Teague will present.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, this next public hearing is located down in the southwest corner of the city, 7413, 7425 York Terrace. It's just south of the YMCA, located here, and the Yorkdale Townhomes at the east of It's mentioned it's two existing single-family home lots, highlighted here. This is a look at the northern home that is proposed to remain with the subdivision. Note the gravel driveway. Moving to the south, this is where a proposed new home would roughly be located. And then moving further to the south, there's an existing Tudor-style home with a detached What the applicant's proposing here is to take those two lots and divide them into three. Both existing homes would remain, and they would like to build a new, single-family home in between the two. Footprint here is 1,500 square feet, so not a relatively, you know, not as big as some of the homes that we see. But the applicant lives in this southern home here, and he has a growing family and has outgrown this house, and would like to build this house for himself to the north. They've provided a grading drainage plan. They would provide a storm retention pond in the rear yard, front, would drain toward the street. Note that the applicant is proposing, I don't know what the exact term is, but kind of a skewed lot line. That's the, they're highlighted in blue here. That's the proposed lot lines. I believe what was done here by the surveyor, the minimum lot width requirement is 75 feet, and these two properties are 225 feet wide. So you could get three 75-foot-wide lots if you measured the lot width at the street. So as it's configured, each lot is 75 feet wide at the street. However, for code purposes, we measure a lot width 50 feet back from the front lot line. So that's actually a point right here. So it's been Staff's experience that with those lot lines that are jagged like that, often run into property line disputes in the future. I would recommend that those be straightened out. Doesn't impact the actual lot widths, because at the point 50 feet back, it is where the applicant was proposing. I've discussed this with the applicant, and he's okay with that change. Could this be approved by the Council at preliminary plat? They can make that change when they come back for final plat approval. With this, all required setbacks are met, side yard setback, rear, and front. So to give you a little history of this block, somewhat unique and isolated, Edina, it was platted in 1951. This is a look at the original plat. There were two homes located on this entire property back there. This house here that's highlighted as not included in the plat was built in 1934, and the existing, so the lots that we're looking at are lots nine and 10. The lot, or the home that's here on Lot 9, that was built in 1936. So this was developed around those two existing single-family homes. If those were removed back in the early 50s, in all likelihood, there would be four equal-sized lots similar to the rest of the block, 75 feet in width and 132 feet deep. Again, the, the plant was done in 1951, and the remainder of all these homes were built in 1951 and 1952. So the request requires a subdivision, lot width variances from 75 feet to 59 feet for that north lot, lot depth variances from 135 feet is the minimum requirement to 132, and 107 feet for lots two and three. Again, that one is, the depth is not as deep as the rest of the lots at 132. Again, that's because of that existing home located to the east, and then lot area variances for each of the three lots. This is a graphic that we often look at. It's pretty busy and small. It's just provides a history of similar subdivisions that the city's done over the last 15 years or so. And really, what it demonstrates, demonstrates is that the city has approved some of these and denied some of them. Instances where they've been denied, there were a wide variety of, in shape, on the immediate block, and in the ones where they were approved, there was maybe a lot or two left on that block. The primary issue for consideration are the very, are the findings for the variances met. In this case, and similar to similar subdivision requests that we've done in the past, Staff provides options for the Planning Commission to consider both for approval and denial. Those are outlined in your Staff Report. But with this one, Staff is recommending approval. We believe that the practical difficulty... We believe that the practical difficulty in this case is really based on the applicant's desire to keep that existing home to the south. Um, and it's also, the lot depth um, is compromised because of the circumstance of that home that was built in nineteen thirty-four. So this lot is not as deep as the rest of the lots on the block. So that's kind of a built-in uh, practical difficulty. Uh, all the required setbacks would be met with the, both the existing homes and the proposed. Um, these circumstances are unique to this neighborhood, um, not similar throughout the city. And we don't believe that it would alter the character of the neighborhood. All the lots on this block are seventy-five feet in width. And the average of these three is seventy-five feet. So with that, um, staff is recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions outlined in your staff report. And with that, I can stop there and answer questions.
Kerry. Do any members of the planning commission have uh, questions for Community Development Director Teague?
I'm having trouble taking that off the screen.
If you bring your um, mouse to the top, Kerry, does it give you an option to end your sharing screen?
There it is. Got it. It was hidden.
Yeah, Kerry, this is Jimmy. I, I have a question. Just as it relates to the, the lot on the north side. It looks like there's a, an existing garage in that back corner. Is that the primary issue that that you guys recommended jogging versus having a nice ninety-degree angle? And does that property, that new property line, does that overlap any of that driveway? And hard to tell.
Yeah, as it's, as it is configured today, it would likely overlap. One of the conditions of approval is we're suggesting that those driveways be paved. So when it's paved, it would have to be brought onto its own lot. But you're right, in the corner where the garage is, that is why that, that line is um, angles toward the south, so that that garage can stay on that lot to the north.
Ian, I had a, I had a question.
Jerry, I've had it.
Okay, Kerry. Yeah, that, your point, this, the alternative lot lines that staff proposed, the ones we've read, um, I mean, that's what would go for advance for any further approvals, right? I mean, if, if we um, move to, 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 and, and the applicant was agreeable to that, those revised lines?
He was agreeable to those, yes.
Okay, and, and I, to underscore your one point is that we're not talking about any of the, the new building. So that would be reviewed separately. We're just talking about the plat. And how the land is
Correct.
described. Nothing
Yeah, any, any new, any new building built on that new lot would, would be required to conform to our setback requirements. And that's what they're showing with that screen.
Alright, yeah, thank you Kerry. Anyone else? Kerry, could you wa, could you walk us through the conditions a little bit and just explain them? Okay, we, you, you know, in your proposed conditions for approval, if you could just explain them, because it sounds like there's a little bit of uniqueness here.
Yes, certainly.
Or at least the unique elements.
Are you talking the findings or the conditions?
Uh, the, well, the conditions at this time.
Okay. So standard with all plats, they would have a year after a preliminary approval to come back and get final approval. Um, one of the conditions is that the existing dirt driveways be paved. That's a citywide requirement that all of our driveways need to be paved. Um, they would need to submit evidence of the watershed district approval. Again, they would review the grading drainage plans, um. Uh, a curb cut permit would be required from the engineering department. Are, there is an engineering memo that was included in your packet, and there's some recommendations within that regarding easements and and um, some of the things they would be looking for at the time of building permit, it would be required to meet those. The applicant's reviewed that memo and has no problem with those conditions. Uh, our standard condition about no increase in peak rate or volume to neighboring properties from what's existing today. Um, any disturbance that's caused to the roadway based on the construction, it would be required to repair. Uh, they would need a construction management plan for the construction of the new homes. Utility hookups are subject to review by engineering. And one thing I didn't mention is that um, with the one new lot being planted, they are required a park dedication amount, in the amount of five thousand dollars for that one lot. That would be due at the time of a building permit. And those are the conditions.
For the driveways, do they need, I, 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 you, you did, you touched on them a little bit earlier. Do they need to be moved? Or can they be in the same location?
Yeah, generally the same location. The one to the north is quite wide. That one would have to be um, narrowed. So it's entirely located on the north lot. Right now, that dirt, dirt drive would extend into the, that middle lot.
Okay. Okay. Uh, does anyone else have any questions for Kerry? Okay, the applicant, if you'd like to speak, Mr. Razul.
Sure, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just have, um, um, I just wanted to address our dear committee and quickly talk about this proposal here. Um, um, so um, I will turn off the camera just uh, so dear uh, Planning Commission Chairman, Mr. Nemirov, and uh, first, I would like to show you uh, a couple pictures here, one second here. Um, can you see the pictures?
Not yet.
Can you see now?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, very quickly, um.
Nothing, nothing, we're seeing it coming. It isn't, it's not on my screen yet, but I see that you're sharing.
Uh huh.
There's just a gray box for me.
Yeah.
Is everyone else seeing images or?
I'm seeing just the gray box also.
This is just a gray box, okay. Here my meeting.
Now, now we're seeing a meeting in a meeting.
Okay.
Take your time, take, take a minute.
Yeah, my first time in this um, capacity, so. But basically, it's just a picture of uh, of my family, Mr. Chairman. And uh, you know, our small kitchen that we're barely fitting in. And also, you know, the cramped spaces in our house. Um, and also the picture of, of my kids. I'll, I'll be trying, but I just wanted to um, say that, you know, um.
Mr. Razul, I, I believe we can see your screen now.
Oh, cool. Um, I'll open the pictures here. Can you see the pictures?
No.
Mm-hmm.
Can you close what you, whatever you just opened?
Uh huh. Sure. Closed. And then o-open the folder?
Is there a document that you want to show us? I see a bunch of documents on the bottom of your desktop.
I'm just trying to open the pictures here, that's all, images. Images of the
If you want to minimize your web browser, I think we saw the thumbnails of the photos in a folder.
Okay.
What we're seeing now is your web browser.
Okay, uh, yours.
If you're using two screens, you might have to move one to another.
No, I only have one, one second here. Here, here content, share my, my meeting window. Here content. Here content, uh huh. And then this, right? Yes?
Well, maybe you should just describe them, I guess. Oh, wait, there, there's a picture.
Okay, perfect, finally. Uh, uh, yeah, uh, so my wife, she, she kind of helped me pick the good pictures here. So um, this is the picture of our family, then we have the picture of uh, the house inside that we live in now. It's a kitchen that we can barely fit in. We have two kids. And uh, it's just, um, we're, we're, we're just running out of space, so um, just uh, wanted to address that today, I, I and my family coming to you with a request to, to fulfill our dream necessity and be able to subdivide and build our house. Uh, when we have moved to our block, it was only us newlyweds, and now we have two beautiful kids. Our kids are growing really in height and size, as, as much as we want to fit everything. They call the storage beds, we're finding less and less room to um, accommodate their needs. So we desperately need room for them to thrive. There were many days when we really wished to have the opportunity to grow. The nineteen thirty-six built house that we reside in now is fully planned and uh, was not designed to raise a family. Um, I guess the house planning was different then. While our kitchen is so small, we can barely fit the table, and the kids are only four and two years old. There is no room for kids to play in the house. We're literally running out of space. We love our neighborhood. Um, it has everything to offer our, a family can ask for. It has everything to have a healthy and happy childhood. Um, today we have our closest neighbors on the call um, right now, and my next door neighbor, John Sandbell and Alexander Stasinski are here. Um, they are fully supporting our request and good deeds. Uh, taking this opportunity, I'm expressing my highest appreciation truly to Mr. Kerry Teague um, and Planning Division for their guidance and support. They were incredible and really educated and with the process. So de- dear Mr. Nemirov and committee members, we're candidly very thankful for your effort and support in considering our request to you. Your approval means a world to us, and will determine the future of our family here in this neighborhood. Having this opportunity would ensure that our family will grow, right, and will be paying back for years and years to come to our neighborhood. And a wonderful city of Edina community. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Razul. Uh, do any members of the planning commission have questions for the applicant? Okay, well, we'll get a chance later. Oh, great, Katie?
Um, this is, this is Kate. Um, my question is about um, had, had you considered um, just doing a teardown and rebuilding within the existing spot as it stands today?
Um, you mean with the existing house?
Correct.
Yes, well, the planning of that house, the house was built in nineteen thirty-six. And the planning, the planning of it was so poor that, you know, I invited several engineers and architects and just uh, asking them how we can reconfigure and, you know, bring something up. And they said, it's just gonna cost uh, much more than, you know, it would cost to, to build a house. And practically, they said, you know, this is an old house, you have like very old stuff here, all the materials are old, and if you want to build up something, that's, that's not gonna fit. So that, that's what, uh, that was their response.
And what do you plan to do with the existing home when you build your new home?
Yes, it's a very good question. Um, um, uh, my mom, so my mom is retired and um, she's elderly. We were hoping that um, she can move in. Um, she will move in there, and so she's gonna stay and help us with raising kids.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Does anyone else, any other members have questions?
Jimmy, I have a question, and yeah, maybe this was covered earlier, but the, the lot to the north. Is that one owned by you as well, or is I mean, that we're, you know, we're subdividing, you know, into one, two, three, is number one in your possession currently?
Yes, Mr. Bennett, um, hmm, we had that dream to uh, build a house um, there for a long time, and only with that purpose, we, we um, purchased it uh, back in the days. Um, it's owned by our, our company.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm referring to seventy-four thirteen, that, that's in your
Yes, Mr. Bennett, yes.
Yeah, I, I was just, I, I didn't know if, you know, we had, who have since you own that, that, that makes the situation quite a bit better. I, I just was, I assume so. It just, you know, that lot needs to be reworked quite a bit, and you know, there's a fence there, and then there's the driveway going straight into the garage and you know, switching that kind of changes the uh, the experience for whoever's living in there now. But if, you know, it's in your possession, then it's ultimately up to you, so, thank you.
Yes, yes, again, we, we just only had it because we just wanted to do something in the future. Thank you.
Does anyone else, Jimmy, do you, you're good? Did everything? Okay, does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Okay, well, we'll have another chance. We'll go to a public hearing now, and again, this is for residents who wish to provide testimony. Please call one eight hundred three seven four zero two two one. Conference ID number seven six six zero five eight eight. Uh, well, an operator will ask for your name and street address, and you'll be put in a queue to speak, and you'll have up to three minutes. Uh, we'll let you know if you're running out of time. Um, again, this is, these are presentations, not, even though it feels like a phone call or a conference call, it's just a presentation. It's not a question and answer or discussion section. We may follow up after the conclusion of the public hearing section. And you don't have to call in if you've already provided your comments. And um, we'll take a moment, allow the lines to fill.
Chair Nemirov, this is Communications Director Jennifer Bennerat. We do have a couple of people on the line now. Um, we do need them to press star one to indicate if they would like to speak. So um, again, if you'd like to speak, please press star one. At that point, the operator will put you in a queue to speak um, as part of the meeting. Um, otherwise, I think we just need to hang on for a minute. If they do indicate they'd like to speak, our operator, his name is James, he will interrupt and let us know that they're ready to speak.
...and any additional information required by the company hosting the call friend.
I'm not the only one hearing that, am I? Hearing what? Oh, I apologize. I, I thought I was muted. I'm trying to call in.
I didn't give your full name and address, and then testify for three minutes.
Do you have someone ready to speak? Press star one if you're on the conference call line and you wish to speak at, right now. We'll just give it another moment.
Since they might be queuing up for the next um, public hearing, you can ask one more time to press star one. Otherwise, I think you can move on.
Okay, one eight hundred three seven four zero two two one. Caller ID seven, or conference ID seven six six zero five eight eight, press star one if you wish to speak.
We now have our first person.
Yeah.
John, you're allowed to open. Please state your name and where
John, your line is open. Please state your name and where you're from.
Sure, my name is John Sundal, and I have the property at 7409 York Terrace, one house north of Blas Razul's 4913. Can you hear me?
Good, whenever you're ready to speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to call to support this for Blas Razul. He's been a good citizen and a good neighbor. Because this lot fulfills the setbacks and the plat requirements and the code, I'd just like to say that I support it, and I am a neighbor.
Thank you, Mr. Sundal. Jennifer, do we have anyone else?
indicating they'd like to speak, sir.
Press star one if you want to speak. Everyone else on the call, I appreciate your patience.
We now have Alexander. Your line is open. Please state your name and where you're from.
Good evening, Planning Committee. My name is Alexander Tolchinsky. I'm also a neighbor of Blas. Sorry, I had to turn off my speakers on the phone. Yeah, I also just wanted to call in in support. We've known for a couple of years now. We take our kids and our dog for a walk by his house. And I've had many chances to interact with him and his family. They've been, we've lived in the neighborhood for quite a few years, actually, up and down Xerxes. And they've been a lovely addition. And yeah, I'm glad that he's expanding, wants to bring his mother over, because he or she's a wonderful cook. And I really hope that they do stay in the neighborhood. We're also from, you know, from overseas. My accent has kind of gone away, but it's really nice to have the kind of the small international community that we have building here, and he's part of that. And yeah, I really hope you guys approve that, so he can stay. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Jennifer, is anyone else in the queue? Press star one if you'd like to speak.
We have a couple of people who are on the line and have been for some time, but they're not yet indicating they'd like to speak.
Okay. Well, we'll move on then. Want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
To close the public hearing.
Liz, could you do a roll, please?
Commissioner Douglas.
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett.
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Berube.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Chair Nemirov.
Aye. Thanks, Liz. So that brings up for Planning Commission discussion. Does anyone have any points they'd like to raise?
That's Jimmy.
Jimmy, great.
Yeah, so, you know, considering everything, I feel when it's come, you know, subdivisions have come across, I guess, our purview for the last few years while I've been on the commission. You know, for me, most of the decision kind of resides on whether or not it changed the changes the character of the neighborhood. And that's the principle pretty much by which I've made my decision, because a lot of the, you know, arguments can go either way. For this one, you know, it's, this is a unique area of Edina. And like I think Planner Teague mentioned, it is kind of isolated, just with Xerxes being the border. And it just kind of jutting out behind some multifamily homes. It's kind of a unique little street. And it seems to be a pretty, you know, consistent street, except for this lot. What they're proposing seems in line with the character of the, you know, neighborhood. And, you know, for that reason, I fully support this. As for one condition Kerry mentioned, at least in the engineering report talking about curb cuts. As far as I know, I haven't been there, but for all the satellite imagery and Google Maps, like, there is no curb on that road. So I just want to make sure that they're not, like, on the hook for covering costs or curb cuts if there aren't any. And that's all I wanted to make a comment on. Thanks.
Thanks, Jimmy. Does anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I have a quick one. I thought Steph's report and, you know, and, you know, the fixes for the plats covered it all. So I thought the staff did a wonderful working and delivering, you know, a project, you know, that, you know, hit the problems and the issues. And obviously had a cooperating homeowner, property owner. So I think the staff report really reflected well on their efforts to deliver something to us that makes sense. Thanks.
You had something too?
Yeah, pretty much what Commissioner Strauss said were, you know, the initial lot layout seemed a little odd, and I was kind of a little worried about that. And when staff explained, you know, how they thought of repositioning it, I think that made a lot of sense and it kind of solved any problems that I had with it. So I think they did a great job.
So Kate, did you have something?
No.
Okay, anyone else? I thought, I agree with all the comments that have... Chris, do you have something? I, sorry, I agreed. I mean, I agree with everyone's comment. I think this will be a net gain to the neighborhood. So does anyone have a resolution of any, or a motion, excuse me? Jimmy?
I'm of approval of the subdivision request based off of the alternative plat laid out by staff and the recommendations highlighted in the staff report.
Second. So we're voting on the resolution that's proposed in the staff packet, which includes paving the roads and... Jimmy, I just had a brain freeze. What was your additional thing? Oh, the lot lines, the changing the lot lines. Do we need to say anything about the size of the driveways? If those are conditioned, do we need to say something about relocating or narrowing the driveways at all?
You could. I don't, I don't think you would need to. They would work with our engineering department. And Commissioner Bennett's right. You know, we call those curb cut permits. It's just kind of the terminology, but you're right, there's no curbs there. It would be really a street connection.
Okay, if we don't, so do we don't need to amend Jimmy's resolution? Any other discussion? Liz, could you do a roll vote, please?
Commissioner Douglas.
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew.
Nay.
Commissioner Bennett.
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Berube.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Chair Nemirov.
Aye. So the motion passes. Well, thank you. And that takes us to our next matter on tonight's agenda. Kerry, is there anything else on this matter?
No, this one will go to the City Council on May 19th.
Okay. So the next matter on tonight's... Excuse me?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome. The next matter on our agenda is another look at something we saw a few meetings ago. It's a parking stall variance and revised final development plan for 4500 France for Orion Investments. I believe City Community Development Director Teague will be presenting.
I will. Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Can you hear me? Did I unmute my microphone?
I can.
You can?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Yes, this is a project that you have reviewed previously. It is for a parking stall variance and a revised final development plan that was tied to a PUD when this project was approved a couple of years ago. This is up in the 44th and France district, specifically the intersection of Sunnyside Road and France Avenue. It is the project that's currently under construction at 4500. It was approved for three stories of housing above retail space. This is a look at the floor plan that was approved back in 2018. It was for about a 3,600-square-foot restaurant. As part of those approvals, they were limited to a seating capacity of 35 seats. That was based on the square footage of the retail to the south and how much the parking ramp or the parking lot that they were providing on the site could be supported by city code. What the applicant is proposing is to expand the restaurant in size a little bit to just over 3,700 square feet and expand the number of seating to 100 seats. Just a quick look at the floor plan for the 100-seat restaurant. Not so much about the how it's laid out. It's just the number, 100 seats that are proposed. So back in February, when the Planning Commission considered this request, it was for 110 seats. And the Planning Commission recommended denial at that time. The vote was six to two. But rather than move this forward to the City Council, the applicant took a pause and wanted to take some of the feedback that they received from you all in your review, take it out to the community, to the residential area and some of the adjacent property owners, and try to work up an alternative. And they'd like to get feedback from the Planning Commission on what they've come up with, rather than moving forward with that original denial recommendation. So the changes that they've made since that original review, they've reviewed, they've reduced the size of the restaurant from 110 down to 100 seats. And they're offering parking available on adjacent properties. And I'll show a map here on my next slide where those would be located. They're also stating that restaurant patrons would be directed to use those additional parking stalls. Through their website, directional maps would be provided at the restaurant. They would install signage within their parking area, directing people where to park should that lot be full. And they would reach out to some of the neighborhood associations and try to communicate what that parking plan would be. They would have the workforce. The max shift at the restaurant wouldn't exceed 10 employees. And they would be asked to walk, use ride share, public transportation that would reduce the parking area on their lot. They've also agreed to fund the construction of some type of a crosswalk across Sunnyside. They would work with staff and the Transportation Commission on that. They've offered to fund that up to $7,500. And they're also offering a redesign of the parking entrance that would eliminate the left turn out from their parking area. That was a source of a lot of discussion at Planning Commission and Council. Concern raised about traffic moving out of the development to take a left and move into the residential area. So the parking, and actually, we have some new information just this evening on this. So the sites that they've secured through a variety of handshakes and agreements. This is a dental clinic on 44th, where the property owner has agreed to a lease of up to a year to provide some 24 spaces there. So if customers were to park there, there is a public alley that they could move through here to get to the restaurant or on 44th Street to France and to the restaurant itself. Four parking spaces provided at this site. And the Masonic Home was originally suggested as an alternative, but they have said that they will not offer those spaces. So that's not on the table this evening. The applicant also owns the property to the south, and they have 15 parking stalls that are available there. These were considered as part of that original request. And so permanent long-term use of those 15 stalls. And there was, if you, some of the planning commissioners may recall, there was a proof of parking within this green space here. There's also, might be an opportunity to turn those into parking stalls as well. So the request before the commission is, again, it's kind of a reconsideration of that original request. The variance is 61 spaces are required. There's 36 spaces on this site. So that's the variance from 61 spaces to 36. The original request was the variance. Based on 110-seat restaurant, 65 spaces were required. And then again, a revised final development plan to change out that condition that was part of the PUD that would allow 100-seat restaurant rather than 35-seat. So again, 61 parking spaces are required. SPAC Solutions did the parking and traffic study with the original request. They have updated their study. Max Morland is on the line and can answer any questions in regard to that study. The study that was included in your packet, they've actually, they've made some revisions this week based on some new information that we received from the applicant in regard to the hours of parking that's available on his site to the south. So the conclusion of the parking study, utilizing those 15 spaces and the 36 spaces that we, we know the applicant has access to with, you know, binding agreements that they can provide that parking. The study had concluded that there was two days where the project would be short parked during the week. As a result of some shifting of the hours of availability of those parking stalls to the south, the study concludes that they would be short one day per week during the weekday. So we're getting closer to meeting the code requirements with off-street parking. Primary issue for consideration, are the findings for the variance met? I won't go through the detailed criteria. We went through that as part of the original request. As with projects like this, staff has outlined in your staff report, a case can be made here both for approval and denial on this one. And again, we've provided those findings. And should the Planning Commission wish to recommend approval, there's a list of conditions also in the staff report. Do you want to mention that the applicant has really heard what the Planning Commission talked about at your last review and have made an effort to try to address those concerns? Again, providing that additional parking off-site, reducing the number of seats and a series of other things that they are proposing here. The bottom line for staff in this case really is that the project, the parking study talks about it, it is short parked. What we've learned now, it's just one day per week. Nonetheless, the project couldn't be supported by those two known parking supplies. So the recommendation, the recommendation is for denial. What's for consideration really for the Planning Commission this evening, are the measures that are offered up here by the applicant enough to offset that shortage? But again, staff is recommending the denial due to that shortage. So with that, I will stop there, answer any questions you might have. The applicant is here and has a presentation as well. And again, Max Borland from SPAC Solutions is here as well.
Thanks, Kerry. Do any members of the Planning Commission have questions? Chris, why don't you lead us off?
I have a question for Kerry. Kerry, would you please remind us, does the variance stay with the site if the City Council approves it? And the reason I ask that, I appreciate the applicant's efforts to secure the additional... to secure the additional parking and the actions that they've taken based on our prior feedback. But I'm curious, if they lost those agreements in the future, can the city council take any action?
If the council approves the variances, it does run with the land. So the restaurant could change hands, could change ownership. The variances would stand. That's why staff's recommendation is really based on the known parking spaces that are available. The applicant owns that property to the south. So we can be assured that those spaces would be available through long-term agreements that the applicant would draw up. So that's part of staff's concern is, it's great that those spaces are available and those property owners are willing to do that, but we don't have long-term binding agreements.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions?
I have a question. Just generally speaking, I'd like to hear Max Morland from SPAC kind of expand upon the nature of the one day that does not, you know, that is over parked, just so we can kind of understand when, how that was to be.
Okay, well, let's get to the traffic consultant in just a moment. Yes, I do too, Jimmy. I want to hear from Mr. Morland. Does anyone else have any questions for Kerry?
Oh, I guess I have a question for Kerry, too. Kerry, in the last couple of months since we've seen this, is there any update from the city side of things as to how any of the communications have been about district parking or shared parking behind all the commercial businesses per the small area plan recommendation?
Yeah, nothing in the amount where, you know, we're getting close. It's really starting the conversation with some of the property owners. You know, there's a lot of different owners there that have ideas. It's not close enough to the point where we're really confident that something is going to happen. So we're still in the infancy stages there.
Okay, second question for you. As it relates to the $7,500, you know, gift toward a crosswalk, has engineering reviewed any, you know, potential or even gone down that path of potential solutions for a crosswalk and related costs? Or are they waiting till the transportation commission weighs in more?
I think they're kind of in a general wait. They did have some concerns with the location that was proposed by the applicant just because of its proximity to the intersection of France. But I know they are open to the idea of considering something. You know, it's a generous offer to help fund some of those things. You know, maybe it's improvements to the existing intersection. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, okay. Jerry?
Yeah, I had a question for Kerry. Kerry, in the materials, there was mention of a meeting with Orion or the developer and the neighborhood. I don't know if you could speak, was the city part of that discussion? Or was that, is that something maybe the developer would need to address?
Yeah, that was done by the developer.
Okay. But the implication was that these changes that were being brought now were either from previous meetings with the planning commission or that meeting itself, too?
Yeah, kind of a combination of all those things. Feedback that they've received and the feedback from.
So that would, yeah, that would speak to the efforts made to sort of find a solution there. Okay, thank you. We'll cover that later. Thanks.
Anything else for Kerry? Kerry, one thing that's in the applicant's presentation is to fund the development of a crosswalk. Can you show, where exactly would that crosswalk go? Is that, would that go between across Sunnyside, like to Caribou? Or would that cross over more by Convention Grill?
Mr. Carlson can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was somewhere in this vicinity here. I think part of the thinking was get people who might park in this area or come through that alleyway and be able to get to the site. So.
Okay.
There might have, it might have even, it was somewhere along Sunnyside. Ed can correct me. It might have been further to the west as I'm thinking about it.
Okay. And we, the city of Edina controls that road. Would we need any kind of approval from the county or any other road body?
Not on, not on the city street here, no.
Okay. That's all I had. Does anyone else have any questions for Kerry? Kerry, do you recommend that we go to the traffic consultant or the applicant now?
You could go to the traffic consultant. That'd probably be a good time. It's kind of part of the staff presentation.
Mr. Morland, are you available?
Yes, I am here. I'm going to share my screen here, run through a few graphics. Can you see my PDF file here?
Yep.
All right. So I'm Max Morland. I'm with SPAC Solutions. We did the parking assessment for this development. So based on, so the site's proposing 77 residential parking stalls and 36 commercial parking stalls. Based on parking demand forecast, we did, we estimate the peak parking demands for the residential to be 60 vehicles and for commercial to be 53. So that means that the parking demand for the residential portion of the site anticipated to be accommodated fully within the residential supply. So we're just going to focus on the commercial portion of the site, which consists of the retail plus the restaurant. As you can see, 53 is greater than 36. So the commercial parking will exceed demand at some times. As Kerry mentioned, there's an additional 15 parking stalls available on the Edina Gateway property just to the south. That will be available in the evenings. And that puts the commercial parking count to about 51, so pretty close to that 53 peak demand there. And then there's those other parking agreements with those other properties. So I'm going to run through a chart here that we put together just for the commercial parking demand. We can see here the anticipated parking demand over the course of the day. The vertical bars represent the parking demand with the white being for the retail and the blue being for 100-seat restaurant. Those are stacked on top of each other. So you can see the commercial parking demand for the site at each hour of a weekday. So this kind of accounts for Mondays through Thursdays. The solid line at number 36, solid horizontal line, that represents the number of parking stalls on-site for this development. It can be seen that at 6:00 and 7:00 p.m., there's two hours where the parking demand would be greater than the onsite supply. The dashed line that begins later in the day represents the 15 spaces available in the adjacent Edina Gateway parking lot. So with those extra spaces, there's still two hours where we'd anticipate needing some extra parking spaces, but the numbers are lower of how much would be needed on-site. And the dotted line that goes up way higher represents additional spaces from the DP Hugh and 44th Street dental sites. So with those extra spaces, the parking demand, with those additional offsite spaces, the parking demand can easily be accommodated with that. You notice here that the offsite parking at the Edina Gateway, which is represented by the dashed line, starts at 7:00 p.m. We were recently informed, just the other day, that those spaces would actually be available at 5:00 p.m. So here's our fancy new chart, which is a slightly different line here. So changing the time when those spaces would be available, we can see that there's not only one hour on weekdays at 7:00 p.m. where we'd anticipate still needing two extra parking spaces outside of what's available on this site and on that adjacent property to the south. So Kerry had mentioned there's one day per week where the parking demand exceeds the supply. That was slight miscommunication. It's actually one hour per weekday where we'd anticipate a higher supply than demand, but it's just a couple of vehicles there. And with the dotted line there showing the other properties, we expect plenty of availability for off-street parking within the area. I've got two other slides that are very similar to this, but these focus on Friday and Saturday. The dotted line up here does include the Masonic Lodge. So I just learned a few minutes ago that that's not on the table anymore, those parking spaces. So drop those spaces down a few. They can be seen on Friday and Saturday that there would be more time, that the 36 onsite spaces would be full, three hours as compared to two. But with the extra spaces from the Edina Gateway lots, the parking, peak parking demand should be accommodated on-site. Not represented in any of these slides is any on-street parking or any reductions for bike, ped, or transit use. So with that, I can take any questions.
Does the planning commission have questions for Mr. Morland, the traffic consultant?
Jimmy, I just have a, yeah, well, I just have a comment now. I really liked the visual presentation of this data as compared to other times. I think it explains to anyone pretty, you know, well, easy to understand. So just wanted to thank you for that. And that pretty much answered all my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy. Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Morland?
I do. This is Commissioner Agnew. Given, so I have some numbers written down in front of me. So we have the 36 spots. And then if we look to the lot just to the south, that's an additional 15 parking spots for a total of 51. I think that's what was mentioned. Where the peak was evaluated to be a total need of 53 spots. And that was for one hour per day. Is that correct?
Yep, so 53 spots, one hour per day on weekdays.
Okay. And Max, I don't know if this is something that you're able to answer, but if we were, if the restaurant were to reduce the seats to not go over that 51 max parking between the two lots, do you know what the head count or the number of seats in that restaurant would need to be?
Yeah, I believe it'd be 96. A reduction of four more seats to have the peak demand be 51.
Thank you. That's my only question.
I have a question.
Great.
Okay, one is, actually, two questions. One's a clarifying question and then a follow-up. So on your first slide, you showed that for residences at peak times, you would need 60 spaces out of 77. And then for commercial, at peak times, you'd need 36 out of 53. Okay.
53 out of 36, yeah.
Okay, that does, that does help. I did get that wrong, I guess. I thought the math didn't work, but it does work. I just had it wrong. Thank you. Okay, so, and then we did have a question. You know, it'd be good for people who are listening and watching to know that we do read all of the comments. And this generated a lot of activity. And one of the comments was from someone who had noticed something in the comprehensive plan about needing the internal, needing to account for, I'm shuffling my papers here, trying to find the exact wording, the internal capture rate. And that being, you know, if you could assess how many people actually living on-site are accounted of those 100 seats, how many fewer parking spaces would you need? And I'm wondering if you can speak to that and whether you included that in your analysis and how that might change things.
Sure, yeah. Well, we, back when we did the original traffic study, I think, two years ago in 2018, we included some internal capture rates for the traffic coming to the site, but we didn't actually do that for the parking demand. So that is something that could also be internal capture rate along with pedestrian reductions, bicycle transit, people not driving to the site. Those are potentially additional reductions that could occur.
So right now.
Didn't have a fixed number for that, so I did not include internal capture rate.
So just to clarify and make sure we're on the same page. So there's, you're assuming everybody who comes to the restaurant will drive?
Not exactly. So the numbers we have are based on counts that we, we and other engineering companies have collected at different restaurants. So it's kind of real-time data. So some of those include people who, only people who drive, some include some bike, ped. We assume there is some non-driving factor in there, but since it's kind of real data, we don't have those actual numbers. But since if the area is trying to become more of a ped bike transit hub, that could potentially be a further reduction. But we didn't take any other reduction. I don't know if that makes sense.
So are the restaurants suburban restaurants or urban restaurants?
They're classified as general, urban, suburban. So they weren't, you know, city downtown districts or anything like that. They're general, urban, suburban. So typically areas like this would be realistic.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Morland? Boo?
So just to clarify what your graph was showing, what it was saying is that for one hour, one day a week, there's a gap of two parking spaces from what's provided, from the building and the building next door. So what that means is that two cars would have to find parking on the street somewhere east or west of France.
Exactly, yeah. Two cars would have to park somewhere else. And then there's all those extra spaces that are going to be provided in other lots. So plenty of excess demand overall or supply.
Right, right. But if we didn't, if we didn't include those, if we, if we include those for a second, what this graph is saying is that there are a total of two-car parking spaces on the street somewhere within a quarter mile that people would have.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, any other questions for traffic or parking, excuse me? I have a couple of questions, Mr. Morland. Excuse me. I'm working on a few different screens. So in 2018, I'm going to throw some numbers on you if you want to write them down. They're coming from the 2018 and 2020 traffic parking studies. In 2018, peak period parking demand for apartments weekday was listed at 64. Friday was listed at 64. Saturday was listed at 54. In 2020, the comparable numbers for apartments weekday are 60. And weekday, you know, it decreased from 64 to 60 weekday. It decreased from 64 to 60 on Friday. Then it decreased from 54 to 47 on Saturday. Also, in 2018, it said that there were 46 spaces needed for retail and restaurant on weekday. And now we're saying 62 needed for weekday, even with a 65-seat increase in the restaurant. The Friday retail restaurant parking spaces went from 47 to 59, an increase of eight, even with a larger restaurant. And Saturday, on Saturdays, the peak parking demand in 2018 was 68, but in 2020, it's shown to be less, by nine, to be 59 on Saturdays for peak parking demand, even though the restaurant's getting bigger. Could you walk us through why parking, particularly on that Saturday number, why the parking demand would decrease by nine with 65 more seats in the? why the parking demand would decrease by nine with sixty-five more seats in the restaurant?
Sure, yeah. There's two factors to consider in that. The first is that the rates that we use, those are kind of constantly being updated. As we get more data, as we collect more information at more restaurants, those rates change every couple of years. So the rates we're using are different. The second thing is how we calculated those, that parking demand back in 2018. We originally did the calculations based on the straight, I think, thirty-seven-hundred-square-foot restaurant. So we did it by square footage, whereas now we're kind of honing in and doing it by seats. So previously, it was a thirty-seven-hundred-square-foot restaurant, which could fit, and I'm not a restaurateur, however many seats in it. And now we're just calculating by seats. So it's actually a slightly different calculation with outdated data. I think you're on mute there.
So if you're using seats in 2018, how many seats does a, are assumed by a typical thirty-seven-hundred-square-foot restaurant?
I don't have a number in front of me to guess on that.
Okay. All right. Why did you have the apartment numbers going down?
That again is based on newer data. So since 2018, we've collected more data on actual counts at different apartment buildings. And so it looks like, in general, apartments are parking less than they did a few years ago.
Okay. And obviously, one huge change that's occurred even since February is now we have this stay-at-home. How is, how is that affecting parking calculations?
Yeah, so we're not collecting any, well, we're not collecting any data because we're not going, leaving our house to collect data, but we're not, as of now, I think we're all assuming this is temporary to some extent, but I'm sure there will be some impacts. So we didn't make any changes based on the current situation with the pandemic. It could, it could change things in the future, but we'd have to collect new data when things are back up and running to see what that actually would be.
Hey, let me ask you another question. If the... Why did the numbers go down on Saturday? The part for the residential, why? So, what... You know, I guess there was a decline from sixty-four to fifty-four in 2018. Now there's a decline from sixty to forty-seven. Why are so few parking spots needed on Saturday?
Yeah, so again, that's, it's all based on the data that's been collected. So it'd be speculation on my point. I speculate that, I guess I don't have a really good answer, but that's just based on the data we've collected. And that's been provided us from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, based on apartment usage and needs.
Is there a scenario in which, as neighborhoods become more quote-unquote "walkable" with more activities, that there's more residential demand for parking on weekends than there is during the week? Because people just park their car and leave their car parked during the week. They might be driving to work or something and only need their car overnight, but on the weekend, they might just leave their car parked and enjoy their neighborhood?
I guess that's possible. I know not everyone works just during the week as well, so there's a lot of factors to account for there.
Okay. That's everything I have. Does anyone else have any questions, further questions? Kate?
Yes, I have one more. And so I think a lot of this discussion has really been centered around the parking, which makes sense. But some of the concerns that we've heard from the neighbors of this area is the increase of traffic and the potential to cause more unsafe conditions on those roadways. Did this study also look at, like, traffic volumes in general? And if so, can you speak to that a little bit?
This particular study did not focus on traffic, but we did do a traffic study in 2018 that looked at it. And we didn't anticipate a lot of the traffic going through the residential. Most of it's going to be coming off of France. And based on the results from that study, we didn't have any significant concerns with the added traffic from this site.
And that was keeping in mind a, the square foot of the restaurant? Or that was specific to the thirty-five feet in the restaurant?
That was the square footage of the restaurant. And we actually did look at the comparison between the traffic, and it was only a few trips per hour different between that thirty-five-hundred-square-foot restaurant and the hundred-seat square-foot restaurant. So any changes based on, if we're looking at based on the square footage versus the number of seats that we're looking at now, those are pretty minimal.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any further questions? Mr. Marland, thank you very much. And hang on, of course, but with that, Mr. Carlson is the applicant. Would you like to speak?
Good evening all. Yes, I would. And I would like to share my screen. Can I screen up?
Yes.
Yeah, we see it in presenter mode, but I think that that's fine.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes, that's perfect.
Okay, great. First of all, I thank you everyone for having the dialogue and engaging in this. You know, there's been a lot of consternation, and we worked to develop a solution to help overcome this parking hurdle tonight. So the first thing we did was on March 9th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Riveter, we hosted an open house. And there were approximately twenty attendees, and we had a two-hour back-and-forth dialogue. Our restaurateur was kind enough to bring food and drinks. And I think we came up with some solution, solutions that we're looking forward to discussing tonight. First of all, we reduced the restaurant size from one hundred, from one hundred and ten to one hundred seats. Secondly, we signed lease agreements for forty-three parking stalls with Forty-Fourth and France, DP Hugh, and our adjacent building, the Edina Gateway. Thirdly, we heard messaging around safety. And so we've agreed to provide up to seventy-five-hundred dollars for a crosswalk. In regards to the question about where that crosswalk is located, we would ask that staff really direct us where it should be, and we'll dedicate up to seventy-five-hundred to put that crosswalk in place. Or alternatively, should staff want to upgrade existing crosswalks, we would do that. Our vision was something along the lines of what's in the Fiftieth and France area. Secondly, at the city's request, we would eliminate the left-out from the public parking area on the Sunnyside Road. Thirdly, we'd create signage directing patrons with no parking in the neighborhood and directions to the area parking. And I provided a sample of that signage to Mr. Teague, and I hope to show it tonight. And lastly, there was concerns about trucks, and restaurant deliveries are piggybacked on deliveries to existing restaurants. So that means no net gain of trucks. It just means they, whether they're serving Convention Grill or Great Wall or whomever, they carry the same ingredients for our proposed restaurant on that same truck. I wanted to just point out what the project looked like beforehand to talk about safety. We used to have a situation with crossing cars on the corner. We used to have a situation with the giant crosswalk on the corner. And those have been eliminated. And here's our proposed project with wide sidewalks, pedestrian seating, landscaping, and one curb cut down Sunny Side. This area was taken three days before lockdown. It was an attempt for us to insert the project as what it will look like as finished to point out stalls that we've been talking about with staff. We do not have and will not have right-standing Masonic home stalls. We will, however, have stalls at Fifteenth Surface Stalls at Edina Gateway. We pointed out some of the on-street parking. It's not included in our parking calculations, but just for a visual. And here's another look of what it, what some of that parking looks like. We wanted to just talk about really, from our seat, what are the most convenient areas to park if you're a patron of our proposed restaurant? There's thirty-six stalls onsite. We've got fifteen stalls adjacent next door, four at DP Hugh, and twenty-four at Forty-Fourth Street Dental. So we're going to provide up to seventy-nine off-street stalls. If we do not, if we do not include Sunny Side or exclude Sunny Side Road, there's approximately thirty-five on-street parking stalls between France and Ewing on Forty-Fifth, or on the east side of France Avenue between Sunny Side and Forty-Sixth. We believe all of that on-street parking would be much more convenient than parking down Sunny Side Road into the residential neighborhood. Lastly, you know, we're here to have more dialogue ideas and solutions with your group. There's a few that I'd like to just bring up right now. First of all, we shared contact information for area businesses and owners to carry in other staff at Edina so that they could initiate the conversation about district parking. We're happy to be an advocate for that. Secondly, and possibly most importantly, on our adjacent Edina Gateway project, we have four parking stalls that we have not constructed. It's currently green space. Those stalls could be constructed very easily and would put us over the hurdle of adjacent onsite parking that SPAC has identified. The restaurant plans have been provided, the concept plans. The main patron entrance is along France Avenue, which further directs, further directs patrons away from parking along Sunny Side. We've secured one-year leases with DP Hugh, our building, the Edina Gateway, and Forty-Fourth Street Dental. Would it help if we talked about two-year parking leases? There may be more opportunities to lease stalls elsewhere. And, you know, we're here with our ears on and our minds open to try to come up with some solutions for this project. So with that, I'd maybe show a sample of the parking. Is that visible now?
No.
No, okay. Well, I'm gonna try to skip that, but... Is it visible now?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So this was a sample parking signage that we, this is the parking signage we would provide within the public parking area to say that there's off-street parking available in these areas. And this would be signage on the best wheel entrances to the restaurant. So with that... Close down. With that, I'm here to listen to ideas and questions and look forward to further dialogue. And thank you for giving an opportunity to present these solutions and ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Does anyone have questions for the applicants? Jerry? Okay, Kate? Kate, did you have something?
Jerry can go first.
He said no.
Okay. And so I have really, I think, two main questions. First, what has changed over the last two years? The original proposal was for the thirty-five people. And now, you know, two months ago, we looked at a hundred and ten, now we're looking at a hundred. What has been the main driving factor in a two-to-three X increase in the number of seats required for this restaurant?
Great, thank you for the question. Wouldn't we agree to the thirty-five stalls because we were in the ninety percentile that we'd like to do a restaurant on the corner, not a hundred percentile? And as it became, it became clear to us as we worked through this project that, you know what, a neighborhood restaurant that's smaller in size would be a great fit for this corner. And frankly, a lot of our support during the initial entitlement process talked about how much they wanted a neighborhood restaurant in this corner. So therefore, Commissioner Agnew, we decided that, listen, we really want to pursue a restaurant. We talked to multiple restaurateurs. We believe we have identified one that is a great fit within our project. Keep in mind, we'll have, you know, forty-five units with residents living above this. So we want to make sure that it's a high-quality operator. And really, it was living up to what we said we were going to do by trying to bring a neighborhood restaurant to the corner. With regard to thirty-five versus a hundred or ten or a hundred seats, really, you'll see that a hundred-seat restaurant is on the very small side. Thirty-five seats is really not feasible. And so that's the minimum seats that we can get by with to have an economically viable restaurant.
Thank you. And what, kind of building off of that, what would be the impact if you moved forward with a thirty-five-seat restaurant today? And after that had been open or sometime down the road, we revisited this and potentially approved a hundred seats in the future?
I appreciate the question and idea. Thank you. Frankly, I'll answer it this way. We're really excited that the restaurateur has stuck with us. And a hundred seats is as small as she's willing to do to make our project a reality. And frankly, the infrastructure investment in tenant improvement, build-out packages, vent hoods, freezers, coolers, gas lines, air conditioning, so on and so forth, including FFNE and everything else, is substantial. So simply put, the economic investment for a thirty-five-seat restaurant in a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot space just doesn't work.
Thank you. And my last question, just because you're probably closer to the restaurant industry than I am. Do you have any examples or know of any local instances of thirty-five, approximately thirty to forty, seat restaurants?
That's a great question. The restaurants that I looked at were similar, were really to try to focus on popular area restaurants and their seats. So... One moment. The Convention Grill has ninety-eight seats. Martina has a hundred and forty-two seats. Pizzeria Lola is the smallest one we sampled, which was sixty-six seats. Coalition is a hundred and seven seats. And Tinto Kitchen is eighty-five seats. So I believe all of these restaurants, none of them are in new, modern buildings. And some of them are occupying second- or third-generation space. So I think the economics of rent are much different.
Thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Thank you.
Does any, do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant? Jimmy?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and then a bunch of commentary that I don't need to bog the applicant down with yet. My two questions, I brought one up as a potential solution the last time, and that was, and I think maybe even more evident this time, the residential portion of the building is under parks even, or is over parks? Yeah, it's comfortable on parking, you know, there is a good supply for its demand. And even at its peak, it looked like there was well over ten spots available. I want to know if you've considered at least, you know, not using that for patrons because there'd be special access to access that, but, you know, telling employees that they should ride-share or take a bus. I mean, some of them will still drive, but have you looked into utilizing the residential parking specifically for employees to kind of lessen, you know, the blow to neighboring properties, but still keep the parking to this property? Just, that's my first question.
Great question, thank you. And we've asked our apartment leasing and management team that specific question, and the answer was a resounding no, that the residents of any project, especially this project, are going to expect secure and private parking. We may consider and have discussed providing parking stalls for the two restaurant owners in the parking below, and will mandate that the employees park in some of our off-site parking areas. But we're unable to provide public parking in a secured key-card entry, remote-controlled garage. But, um, we're unable to provide public parking in a secured, uh, key-card entry, remote-controlled garage.
Okay, that was a good yet unfortunate answer. Um, the, the second question I had, you know, although it's seasonal, I'm, I'm expecting you are planning for some outdoor seating, can you speak to that?
Uh, yes, we, we'd like to have outdoor seating, seating that is seasonal. And we have not developed, uh, seating arrangement for the exterior.
Okay, thanks. That's it for me for now.
Does anyone else have questions for the applicant?
I have a quick question, just sort of a technical question. Um, so, you know, the restaurant takes a lot of time to build out. There's a lot of detail in all the equipment and such. Um, I'm just curious, when you secured the year-long lease, um, and it's probably reasonable to think that at least some of them can be renewed, but, um, for now, it's just secured for a year. Um, when does that year start? Would that be when the restaurant opens or is it now? And a follow-up question would be, when would you anticipate the restaurant would open? I just want to gauge how secure those extra parking spaces are.
Sure, um, thank you. Uh, first of all, uh, you know, making a lease with ourselves on the building next door is obviously easy. Um, the DP Hugh is a partner of ours in the project, so that's also very easy. And our relationship with Steve Eager comes from my in-laws and goes back to grade school. So, uh, without making Steve older than he is, I think that's fifty-plus years. So for us, the technical aspect of extending lease agreements is very easy. As for when they'd start, uh, we had intended that they would start on or about October first and are really contingent upon success of this project. Excuse me, this restaurant project.
So, so the, the year starts when the restaurant opens, basically, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any further questions for the applicant, any other commissioners?
Well, I, I have a few for Mr. Carlson, um, a variety of questions. Um, start with the signs. Where, where would you locate those signs?
Uh, there'd be multiple areas within the project. Uh, they'd be on columns and doors, um, entering and exiting the project, making, uh, restaurant patrons aware, where, aware of, where, aware of the additional parking. And we would also use them on the main and side restaurant entrance doors.
Okay, uh, the apartments, you have, you have fifty-two apartment buildings, apartment, apartment units in your building. Are the parking spaces for the tenants, are those reserved or are those, um, general seating kind of thing?
Um, one minor correction, Commissioner Nemirov, we have, uh, forty-five units.
Forty-five?
Forty-four apartment, yep, forty-five units, um, forty-four, um, apartments and one guest suite, to be very, um, precise.
Okay.
Um, those are assigned, signed reserved seats. And there, um, there are a handful of tandem parking stalls.
So, okay. So for calculation of the parking you need now, can we really count? I mean, how many, how many will be assigned? See, I'm looking at the traffic study, the, the parking study said fifty-two units. That's where I got fifty-two. Um, how many will, how many parking spaces will be assigned to apartment residents?
Uh, it'll be between seventy-four and seventy-seven, um, parking stalls.
That'll be assigned to the apartments themselves?
Correct.
Okay, can they, can they be used if they're, by people visiting the retail and the restaurant? If the apartment person isn't there, or are those going to be blocked off or not, not usable?
Uh, those, those dedicated underground rest, uh, residential stalls will not be available to the general public.
Okay. And then how many, talk, tell me again, how many parking stalls are you building total? Is it a hundred and seven?
Well, there, there's between seventy-four and seventy-seven in the lower garage. We, we, and you'd think that we'd know exactly, but frankly, we're still routing some of the utilities for the project. So we're hopeful that it's seventy-seven. And then we've got thirty-six up top. So it's a hundred and, what is that, a hundred and thirteen total stalls? Hundred and thirteen total stalls on site.
But it's really only the thirty-six that we could consider for the retail and the restaurant, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So then, I don't understand, if, if, if the traffic study says that sixty-two will be needed weekday peak, and between the ones on the top of the property and your northern property are fifty-one, help me understand again why it's just one hour a day or something? One day a week?
Uh, would it be okay if we asked Max Moreland that question?
Sure. Uh, let me, before we do that, let me ask you a couple of other questions and we'll get back to the parking. Um, if this were approved, when could the restaurant open?
We've targeted an October first opening date.
Okay. All right, and then, this is a question that I would not have asked in February. Um, is there going to be a minimum distance between the tables? I don't know if that's, I don't, it's just a, obviously, you can, you know, it's just a new question that no one would have thought of in the last hundred years.
Yeah, it's an unfortunate question, obviously. Um, you know, Rebecca Ellingsworth is open and operating at Tinto Kitchen with takeout only. And, um, sidebar for her, it's Amy and I, we love her food. So if you haven't tried it yet, please do. Um, I would suspect that like any other, you know, restaurant operator, that she'll follow whatever guidelines are in place to combat COVID at that time.
Makes sense. All right, that's everything I had, so maybe we can bring Mr. Moreland back on and help me under, help me understand where I'm, my math is lagging.
Sure, um, yeah, so I'll, uh, maybe I'll show this again here. Uh, just our, our peak demand calculation. So the residential sixty with seventy-seven, uh, spaces. And then that commercial was fifty-three was the peak with the thirty-six onsite spaces.
Could you just pause, could you just pause there? That's different than the numbers that are in your traffic report. At least the one from February. I mean, unless the reduction of ten spaces, of ten parking seats reduced it by nine, unless the reduction of ten restaurant seats reduced the parking needs by nine spaces. But, your February, your February report said the commercial needed sixty-two spaces, weekday fifty-nine Friday and fifty-nine Saturday.
Sorry, just pulling up the.
That's okay, take your time.
We did update this report, update this report a couple of times. Um, so I'm looking at the report dated February fifth. Uh, and our weekday number was fifty-eight, fifty-three on the Friday, fifty-six on the Saturday.
Okay, I'm looking at one dated February fifth. Uh, you know, obviously, so if I go to the, what was provided for tonight's meeting.
Oh, okay, are you looking at a table and adding those numbers up there from table two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think I see the, uh, the issue here. Sorry.
Because I assume that retail and restaurant are going to be, their customers are going to be going for the same thirty-six-seat parking spaces.
Yep, so, uh, if you look at my screen here, that's where we kind of did this time of day. And we found the time, the peak of the retail is different than the peak of the restaurants. So the five plus fifty-seven didn't really happen with those old numbers. So you can see the retail here would peak around noon, uh, restaurant peaking around seven PM. Um, and so with those added together, that's where we get that fifty-three number.
Doesn't it depend on the type of retail? I mean, I worked in a retail establishment when I was in high school.
Sure.
Uh, next to the good old Yangtze Chinese restaurant. And our busiest time was when they were busy.
Sure, yeah, it depends on the retail. Uh, we just did it for a general retail. Uh, we kind of had to make some guesses since we don't know what's going to go in there. And with all of these, of course, these are all just forecasts. So whether it's over two spaces here, it might actually be not exactly that in the future. So these are more, um, general magnitude forecasts.
Okay, and, and I guess it depends on neighborhood. Like, I, I remember one time being in Denver in Lodo District and the same story. The retail stores were busiest when the restaurants were busiest. Um, other places, it's different. I don't know what Fiftieth and France is like. I guess it depends on what the, what's in the retail store.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so you're saying fifty-seven is the peak demand, right? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, fifty-three is the number for this site.
So how can it be fifty-three if the table two says it's fifty-seven? Is that because?
That was an older version, older version of the report.
A hundred and ten, because it's a hundred seats instead of a hundred and ten?
Yeah, and then, uh, the retail and restaurant weren't exactly lining up with the peaks at the same exact time.
Okay, so the re, the restaurant peak is fifty-three, is that right?
Commissioner.
Uh, fifty-two for the restaurants.
I'm sorry?
Uh, fifty-two for the restaurant.
Okay. Okay. Do you, Carrie, do you have this new report?
I, I do have the new, the new report. We should be looking at peaks using both the retail and the restaurant combined. You know, what is the peak number for those two uses at the same time? So Max, are, are you saying fifty-three is the peak number for just the restaurant? Or is that restaurant and the retail?
That's restaurant and the retail, so that's the peak, combined peak. You know, the whole commercial portion of the site.
So that, so that's the right number we should be looking at.
Okay, and then, and so then you're adding the thirty-six and the fifteen to get to the fifty-one and saying, that's only going to be for a couple hours or one or two hours, there'll be two spots. Is that how you got there?
Yep.
Okay, okay. How many, uh, parking spots do you think will be needed at peak at rest, at, for the restaurant?
For just the restaurant, our peak number was, uh, fifty-two.
Fifty-two, and you think it?
Didn't include it.
Okay, and you think at that time in the restaurant's at its peak, there'll only be one spot needed for the retail?
That's the numbers we used, yeah.
And I guess going by my history, I mean, if the, the stores are busy when the re, if the retail's busy when the restaurant's busy, it's, you don't need separate parking. It's oftentimes it's overlap.
Sure.
You know, be the same, same parking spot. Okay, I think, I think that's, I think that answers my questions. Does anyone else have any other questions? Yeah, wait, I'm looking at something else though here. So, in the, in the package we got, there's a spreadsheet called Applicants Forty-Fourth and France Parking Availables, Availability Study. Is that the document we should be looking at?
The document that you should be looking at is the Revised Parking and Traffic Study. It was dated, dated April twentieth.
Okay, I have that open too.
Yep, so that was the one that I referred to and, and Max did in his present, presentation. It was based on, he's revised it and submitted a new one that's not part of your packet that concludes their short part, just one day a week. That was the new graph that Max had shown. The, the study that's in your packet and what, um, staff went by in its recommendation was that there were two days that it was short. But we, um, had provided some additional information this week that, that opened up some of those parking stalls on his property to the south. And because those stalls are open, um, it, it, um, provided some more relief for him. So there's one day that it's short for those two stalls.
Okay, I guess I have one.
Correction on that. I, I think that it's weekdays, that it's short by one hour every day.
Um, Max, do you want to clarify that? Is it every day or one day during the week? Or is it every day during the week?
One hour for each weekday.
Oh, for each day, okay.
Can I ask another question then? Why does parking demand go for the restaurant decrease on Friday and Saturday?
Uh, yeah, so that's based on, again, uh, it's all based on counts from other restaurants we have. Uh, the peak time was decreased, but the, um, kind of the peak period was increased. So it's busier for longer, but it's not quite as busy as that one peak on the weekday where everyone kind of goes at the same time. On Friday and Saturday, it's spread out a little bit more.
Okay. That's everything I had. Does anyone else have anything further? Thank you, Mr. Moreland. Mr. Carlson, do you have anything else you wanted to add after this conversation? I know you seemed like you might add something at one moment there.
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to add that a lot of retailers close at five PM. And there's staggered closing times with our retailers in the buildings adjacent. So I think that's why the report has had so many different iterations as we've worked to try to get it to be as accurate as possible. Not we, excuse me, it was Max, is, Max has worked to try to get it as accurate as possible. And lastly, uh, in general, good retail leasing practice is to have complementary uses, meaning that they don't create, uh, traffic at the same time.
Thank you. Um, it's a public hearing. So this is, uh, thank you all for that discussion. Uh, public hearing, so this is when we can open up to residents and other people wishing to talk. Uh, if you want to call in, that phone number is one eight hundred three seven four zero two two one, conference ID seven six six zero five eight eight. Press star one, an operator will put you in queue, you'll give your name and your address. You'll have three minutes to speak. We'll, we'll give you a notice when you're coming to the end of your time. And, uh, again, remember, these are just presentations, even though it feels like a call or a conference call. It's not necessarily a Q and A. But we may take your comments and revisit them at the end with either the applicant, staff, or other members of the commission. So, and if you've already provided your comments via Better Together, edina.org, or via voicemail, or via the online, uh, mailbox email for Planning Commission, you don't have to submit again. Uh, but if you have any new comments or information you wish to bring forward, we'd be happy to hear from you. Thank you, and we'll wait a moment just to let people call in.
Chair Nemirov, this is Communications Director Jennifer Bennerott. We do have someone ready to speak. Operator, if you would please put through, uh, Sarah Lathrop. Uh, Sarah, please begin by stating your full name and address in Edina. If there are other people on the call who would like to speak, please press star one to get in the queue and the operator will put you through after Sarah has finished speaking. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and.
That's now open.
Okay, thank you, Chair, and members of the commission. My name is Sarah Lathrop, and I live just right up the road from, um, this building at four thousand eight Sunnyside Road. Um, the biggest issue I think that the Planning Commission should really give a lot of thought to is the permanent nature of the variance and the amendment to the development project that's being asked of you and the completely impermanent nature of the things that the development. and the completely impermanent nature of the things that the developer is pointing to in support of his request. The variance and the change to development runs with the property forever. The, these parking agreements are completely impermanent. It's not impossible for someone to get a permanent parking agreement. That's called an easement. Those have not been done here. What we have is not even evidence of a parking agreement. Nothing has been provided for the commissioners to look at, for the city staff to look at, for the residents to look at, to see what exactly is, um, being negotiated. There's a, an, a statement today orally that there has been a one-year lease agreement entered into, but you don't even have anything to look at. That's really not how city business is normally done, and if it was the city's, um, direct interest in property, they certainly wouldn't rely on just a statement like that. Um, even with the property to the south at the gateway, you don't even have an easement. And so if Mr. Carlson decides it's in his best interest to not continue leasing it or sell the property, that's gone. There are no legal protections for the, the community, um, and the residents and the other people there, and that is something that could have been done. Um, and so because of that, the line you should be looking at in that SPAC consulting memo is the solid black line, because that is what is provided going forward for this, um, for this project, not what could be provided in the future. Um, and again, I wanna say, you know, there's a lot of ideas here that like, wow, this developer's really bent over backwards to try to come to the community and make some changes. But what hasn't he brought? He hasn't brought in written easement agreements. He hasn't adjusted the number of stalls for residential units. Forty-nine are required, according to the law and the staff memo and the SPAC consulting memo. He has seventy-seven. Why not, like Mr. Bennett said, make some of those available to the, um, to the employees because he doesn't want to impinge on the interest of the residents? That's his choice. That shouldn't be to his advantage. Um, he also hasn't secured parking for the employees anywhere else, um, in a permanent or significant way. And so those are things that he could have done. Um, and finally, I think there's an assumption that a larger restaurant is automatically better thing for the neighborhood. I would beg to differ about that and, and point to the number of extremely, um, successful and, um, positive um, things that small restaurants provide to communities, especially a small neighborhood like this. Thank you.
Uh, is there another, Jennifer, is anyone else?
Our phone lines are really quite full, but no one has yet hit star one. Again, anyone on the call, if you would like to get in the queue, please press star one, um, and the operator will put you through.
We have Mark on the line. Mark, your line is open. Please state your full name and where you are from.
Hi, this is Mark Schmidt. I live at Yeah, give me one second. This is Mark Schmidt. I live at forty-eleven Sunnyside. And, uh, I'm not gonna belabor the point on things that I communicated, uh, earlier in writing. Uh, but I do wanna raise a couple additional points. Um, one is this restaurant is undoubtedly gonna have a significant amount of outdoor seating. It's been in the sketches of this, uh, building from the get-go, and so no matter what anybody said today, it's gonna be significantly underparked when you factor in that outdoor seating, which hasn't been counted towards any of this. Um, that gives me further doubt about the SPAC numbers, uh, many of which were, uh, said tonight to be, uh, guesses. Uh, well, none of those guesses took into account the actual fact that there is intended to be outdoor seating there. Uh, so to me, that's still, um, a big, uh, issue that hasn't been addressed, um, by this project also. Uh, I mentioned, uh, uh, earlier, and this is the only thing I, I will repeat because it hasn't come up at all tonight, but um, many days this week, uh, the block I live on on Sunnyside, which is the closest block to this development, has had every single parking spot taken. Uh, the vast majority of those vehicles are construction vehicles from this project, which shows that when this site is underparked, they don't go to the other side of France, they don't go find some other parking lot, they come right down the street. I have videos of that, and I would, uh, be happy to send those to any of the Planning Commission members if they would like to see it. Um, and then the other thing that, uh, I'd like to bring up is, you know, I, I don't wanna have to keep having, uh, these, you know, give-to-get discussions in the neighborhood where we're all supposed to go to get together with developers again and again and again and again, uh, to have further concessions extracted from us. I mean, if this is such a nice thing to do to put a crosswalk and no left turn signs, those things would have been done when we were first talking about this years ago. And now they're just coming out for the first time when, uh, the developer wants more. Uh, to me, that's a little, uh, too, uh, too little, too late. Uh, should have been done before if it was such a, a great idea. And I know those ideas came up, uh, previously and were, um, shot down. So, um, I don't think that they're, uh, you know, real benevolent gives, uh, at this stage in the game. Um, and those are the, those are really the points that I, they wanted to bring up in addition to the, um, things that, uh, I had sent earlier today, um, in, uh, i- in comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a further, anyone, another resident comment?
Still have people on the line. Please remember to press star one if you'd like to speak.
Our next one is Richard. Richard, state your name and where you are from. Again, Richard, your line is open. Please state your full name and where you are from.
It looks like Richard may have hung up. Do you wanna move on to the next one, please, James?
I know, I'm here. I'm here, I'm here, please. Yes, Richard Cook, C O O K, forty-three sixty France Avenue.
Hello, Mr. Cook. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the, the parking and traffic results, um, of the study are really dependent on the assumptions that are put in. And we've heard a lot tonight about changing assumptions, changing reports and so forth. It's a little difficult for a citizen to to follow which are the current reports and what the assumptions are, but let me, let me just say this, that, um, there's, there's, we're, we're bickering about a spot here and a spot there. The, uh, bigger picture is, um, the bigger picture is, um, uh, something like, say, waiting lines at peak times at restaurants. Red Cow, for example, probably about forty or fifty people might be waiting at a peak time. They're parked. Um, the, um, I, I second the, uh, the, uh, conditions that were stated by the previous speaker about the permanence of the parking. We told tonight that a thirty-five-seat restaurant is not economically feasible. When was that discovered, and why wouldn't the developer know that when he made the proposal and got it approved? Fourth, uh, we walked the, uh, we walked the space between forty-fourth, uh, dental office and the restaurant, proposed restaurant today. I, I urge all, everyone to do that and see, uh, if that's really a feasible solution. So, in short, the elephant in the room is, we don't have a district parking plan. The city is, uh, in desperate need of that, and we have a cart before the horse. We need to get a dist- a district comprehensive plan in place before we, one by one by one, consider development and, uh, variances. Thank you very much.
Is there another, do you have any other ones? Star one?
Our next one is Mary. Please state your full name and where you are from.
Hi, this is Mary Kay Ricehead. I live at forty fifty-five Sunnyside Road in Edina. And I'm calling to ask you to deny the Orion Investments Parking Stall variance because nothing has changed since you voted to not deny it in February. According to the staff report, the project has thirty-six onsite park- parking spots, and they need sixty-one. So that's a forty percent parking shortage. And, excuse me, this isn't a variance request, it's a complete redesign. And you can talk about, excuse me, you can talk about the numbers with the SPAC report, and you can kinda talk around them. But, um, I believe that was also paid by, um, Orion. And the bottom line is that it's a forty percent parking shortage, according to code. And the piecemeal parking that Orion has assembled for the park, for this parking shortage, isn't really a solution. It's scattered in random spots, um, around the area that restaurant patrons really aren't gonna find. And most importantly, it's gonna evaporate at any given time. We just found out at five o'clock today that Lake Harriet and the Sonic Lodge isn't gonna allow Orion to use their lot. And so this obviously affects the numbers that we've been hearing today. Excuse me. Um, also, I think it's kind of unreasonable to think that the restaurant owner can tell employees to take public transportation or to walk or bike to work. And a large, um, a large part of Orion's plan from the very beginning was this restaurant. And we saw it in all the design plans, and it was pictured, it's been pictured in the huge glossy banners that are on the, um, work site right now that surrounds the building. So that restaurant has always been part of the plan. And neither the restaurant or the parking shortage is a, is a surprise. The surprise is really that we're still talking about this, and there's zoning laws that dictate the parking requirements, and they're in place to protect everyone. I think the biggest variable we're not considering is that the apartments are allocated one parking spot per bedroom. And cou- and couples typically have two cars, especially in a luxury apartment. And so I'm just wondering, if people want another spot, where are they gonna get that? Um, so I'm hoping that you'll follow your original decision and deny the parking variance because the neighborhood really can't absorb this massive parking shortfall. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there another resident pressing star one?
Yes, yes, our next, uh, one is, um, Susan. Your line is open. Please state your name and where you're from.
Sure. Uh, my name is Susan Peterson. I live at four oh six oh Sunnyside. Uh, I am opposed to the variance request. And, uh, I won't go over the reasons that, uh, uh, my neighbors have, you know, in, in amount of detail. I wanna start off by, uh, at least addressing the idea of an economic viability of a smaller, uh, restaurant. Uh, Commissioner Agnew, I believe you, uh, asked that question. Uh, and, uh, I can come up with about four or five different restaurants that are very successful and are smaller. Uh, there is, uh, Tilia in Linden Hills, uh, which has about fifty seats. Bojo's, uh, at Fiftieth and Francis Edina, which has about sixty-five. Don Roal at Fiftieth and Zerkes has just thirty-two seats. Turizo, across the street from, uh, Tito, has sixty-eight seats. And Revival in South, uh, Minneapolis is larger now, but for the first few years that it was open, it only had forty seats. So I think that tells you that a smaller rec- restaurant, uh, certainly can, uh, succeed. These are all successful establishments. Uh, the bottom line is that with all this uncertainty, uh, we are almost guaranteed to have large numbers of cars parking and driving around, looking for parking on our residential streets. And that's not a temporary disruption, but an ongoing safety hazard. And the city staff has identified this type of residential street parking as a change in neighborhood character. That's a reason to deny this variance. So I ask you, uh, to, uh, once again, go along with what the city, uh, staff has, uh, recommended and deny the variance request. Thank you.
Is there another, any other residents pressing star one?
We do have four more residents on, on the call. No one has indicated a desire to speak at this point, so I would remind them and anyone else listening from home, if you'd like to speak, please call in. Um, and then press star one when you're ready to speak. The operator will put you in a queue at that point.
There's no one wants to speak at the moment.
I will give you just another thirty seconds or so.
Okay, our next one is Robert. Your line is open. Please state your name and where you're from.
Hi, my name is Robert Cundy. I live at forty-five twenty-one Drexel Avenue in the Country Club Neighborhood. Um, as I did in February, I'm here to support the comprehensive plan for the city of Edina and the small area plan for forty-fourth and France, and it's because of my support for those two documents, many of which, um, are, Carrie, your names on this commission as signatories, um, that I support the variance in question. Um, ultimately, as I listened in February and as I listened tonight, you guys are gonna be called upon to either vote and make a popular decision that is unjustified by the facts, um, or you're going to vote and make a justified decision that is unpopular. Um, your duty as members of this commission is to do the latter of those two things. Um, the facts remain, despite public commentary about concern for cars and vehicles in the neighborhood, is that the small area plan outlined, you all outlined, that parking in the district, while unorganized, is also underutilized. That traffic on adjacent streets is lower than would be expected and actually decreased during the period of the traffic study for the small area plan. Um, the SPAC study, um, while it has been adjusted for the empirical data that they received from the I T E, um, has changed. It's also because details about the project, um, have changed over time. And ultimately, we are talking about a, um, few cars, um, whether it be one, two, three, or four during a few hours of the day. I think an argument that, um, those cars substantially change the character of the neighborhood is an overexaggeration. Um, I would also point out that just two weeks ago, a variance was approved at forty-five thirty-two France. Um, I think this underscores some of the failings of the staff report on this matter. You have the exact same fact pattern. You have an existing property or an existing project with an approved site plan. The developer decided that they wanted to change that plan. In that case, it was to change storage to additional office space. In this case, it's to expand the number of seats in a restaurant. They did not or were not able to accommodate parking, and the request was approved. It's the exact same fact pattern, and it's a hundred feet away from this development. I would point out that in that case, the required number of parking spots was eleven, uh, or sorry, the required number was eighteen. The amount of allowed space was eleven. That means that they were.
Mr. Cundy.
Sixty-one percent of the required parking. In this case, they have thirty-six out of sixty-one, and that is fifty-nine percent of the required parking. You guys set a precedent two weeks ago. The facts of this case simply do not support that there's gonna be an unburdened some amount of traffic or parking in the neighborhood. I ask that you approve the variance, um, and move it forward to council.
Thank you, Mr. Cundy. Uh, Jennifer? Anyone else pressing star one?
Yes, James, will you please put the next caller through?
Okay, our next one is Rich. Please state your name and where you're from.
Hi, good evening. Rich Mather, thirty-nine thirty West Forty-four Street in Edina. And I wanted to support the variance. I'm very close to the property. So naturally, parking, um, is a concern, whether it's on Sunnyside or forty-fourth or, or wherever the case may be. I think a few callers have mentioned the, you know, the need for district planning, for sure. Um, some of the parking that I've seen on the construction site are also, um, across the street, um, behind Linden Hills Co-op and the gas station, there's a lot of, um, space there, um, where I, I see a lot of construction folks. It's not just on Sunnyside. For sure, there's a lot of parking on Sunnyside right now with the construction. Um, as far as, uh, the restaurant, um, economics, I've been in the restaurant industry for about six years uh, prior to my current job. Um, the economics are vastly different, uh, for a thirty-seat. If you noticed, Don Raul, which was mentioned, I believe that's thirty-two seats, but every table is so packed together that it's basically communal dining. Um, so I, you know, I, I, I don't know if I like necessarily the idea. I don't think it's, it's invalid to have concerns about parking. I think there's a, for outdoor seating, there's gonna be a lot of folks walking from these neighborhoods, um, that don't require parking. So maybe that's a, a net equalizer there. Um, while I think the developer could have been more transparent at the beginning, for sure. Um, while I think the developer could have been more transparent at the beginning for sure, I don't think punishing, uh, them for maybe not doing so at this stage of the game, um, is, is necessarily truthful. So denying the variance just to, you know, kind of write something that maybe they did incorrectly, uh, it, you know, shouldn't, shouldn't be part of this. Um, again, I'm a little bit nervous about it, but I think there was a lot of people that were nervous when, when the Caribou Coffee went down on Interlock and there was a lot of uproar about that. There was a lot of uproar, uh, initially with its development. Um, I'm very glad that the cleaner's site is gone. Um, and anyway, so, I mean, I think we are where we are. I think the restaurant's a very valuable addition to the neighborhood. There are going to be concerns about parking. There's no doubt about that. It's not going to be perfect, but it's not going to be, um, it's not going to be disaster, uh, like a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, do we have anyone else?
A few callers, but no one has indicated they'd like to speak. Again, if you would like to speak, please press star one on your keypad, uh, to indicate you'd like to speak. At that point, the operator will put you in the queue. For those still watching from home, please call in using the conference ID and then press star one to speak.
There's no one wants to speak as of the moment.
Why don't we give it about another thirty seconds? All right, Jennifer, audio team, is there anyone else?
No one wants to speak as of the moment. Please continue.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, then I guess we could, uh, we could bring it back to the planning commission. Now, Carrie, just, just for a point of order, do we need to close the public hearing necessarily? Someone else come? We do, okay, can we get a motion to close it then?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
A second.
Okay, motion and a second. Liz, could you take role, please?
Commissioner Douglas.
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett.
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Berube.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Chair Nemerov.
Aye, thank you. Well, so we got some good feedback there that was actually fairly good summary of what we received on Better Together and through other, um, through our other input areas. Um, I'm just going through Better Together now also. So now I'm going to go through my notes, um, and perhaps I have questions for the applicant or staff. Let me see if I got questions for staff first.
I have, this is Commissioner Agnew. I have a question for Carrie. Um, one of the callers mentioned the possibility of an easement. Um, and I just want to know, like, feasibly, if that is something that could be used in this situation? Um, and if that's something that the, the developer should be considering?
Uh, yes, most certainly. Um, the easement would be used. That would ensure that permanency, that those spaces would go along with that property along with a variance that might be granted. So if, if you're considering, um, any type of approval, you could add as a condition, um, whether it could be a permanent easement, a permanent agreement, um, something to that effect that would provide for, I think, at least the seventeen spaces that the, that the parking consultant has indicated that this site is short. So it would be, um, the thirty-six that's provided within the development and then seventeen, say theoretically to the south where they have fifteen spaces available per day. They do have that proof of parking for four additional spaces, which would actually get you over the seventeen. So to address that issue, that could be added as a condition of approval. I should add too that we do have two of those agreements that the applicant has submitted there for one-year lease arrangements, potentially.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks, Carrie.
Chair Nemerov, I have a question for Carrie as well.
Oh, okay, Sheila.
So, um, I realize that I probably shouldn't be making an assumption, but regarding the outdoor seating, um, just to clarify, I, I guess I was assuming that if you have outdoor seating, then that's considered restaurant seats. So, um, if in the future this restaurant were to have outdoor seating and it was set up so that it actually increased the number of seats to the restaurant, how does the city view that?
Outdoor seated is, seating is not used in our parking requirements. We found that a lot of, oftentimes when it's, when people want to sit outside, the inside of the restaurant is not as crowded. Um, so we don't factor in outdoor seating in our parking calculations. And it hasn't seemed to be a, a problem in the past.
I guess I was thinking that it would be, um, I mean, there's other codes like capacity, fire codes, that sort of thing. Um, how does the city control that someone doesn't just put a bunch of tables outside and drastically increase the capacity?
Yeah, like in the, it, they, they would have to do it on their property. If it spills over into the right-of-way, um, there have to be agreements with the county.
Okay.
So it's monitored that way. Yeah, they, they do have to, um, they do have to meet, um, well, let's say for the liquor license, if they're serving alcohol out there, they would need for their liquor license, it would, the outdoor seating would be looked at at that time. There has to be a barrier. Um, a lot more detail, um, would have to come in regard to the outdoor seating and how that works.
It's probably a reflection of our short outdoor seating season.
Yes.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Carrie, I had a couple of things. One of the things, one of the comments we received was, um, comparing this project, this variance to the one for the retail site just north we did a couple of weeks ago. Do you see this as comparable or different? And if you see it as different, well, how do you see the differences?
It is comparable in that the ask of that application or that applicant was for a parking stall variance, as indicated, and an amendment to their final development plan. So the ask was the same. The way I view it differently is we had the parking study done and the conclusion was the parking could be satisfied on their site. Another difference is that building has been up and operating, so we had some real-life, um, comparisons, um, how it's operating today. And they've found that, that they were, I think it was somewhere between thirty and forty percent occupancy for their parking. So I would see those two factors as differences between the two.
Okay, uh, we also had a comment tonight, and I, I think, you know, we've received this earlier and perhaps online too. Some people felt that, that we've had several community meetings about this project. Do you, does anyone know how many community meetings this project has had? And maybe that's a question for Mr. Carlson. He probably knows.
So I could add that just with the 2008 approvals, there was a public hearing held at the Planning Commission and a public hearing held at the City Council. And then they did have to come back for final approval. This is the second public hearing that, that you've held on this particular request.
What about, do you know how many meetings were, were just like not including Planning Commission, not including staff, but between the developers and the community? And maybe that, again, maybe that's a better question for Mr. Carlson.
Yeah, I think we would, I want to ask Mr. Carlson to respond to that one.
Okay, because that's everything I had for you. Mr. Carlson, I, I think there's a few questions for you that came out. That's one of them. Would you, do you know?
Looks like he's still on the call.
Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we heard you there.
Okay, um, it switched from my phone to my camera, microphone. Uh, we had dozens of individual and small group meetings during the original entitlement process, um, several onsite meetings for this variance. Um, I've had multiple phone calls, uh, no in-person meetings due to COVID. But before COVID, we did host a neighborhood meeting on March 9th at the Riveter.
Online and tonight, and then one of the residents and one of the commissioners also brought this up about the, you know, the idea of getting a, um, an easement for the properties in the north in case you sell one of the properties or both of them, they fall into separate ownership and whether you can do permanent agreements. Could you address those questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Carlson, I can't, I can't hear you. Are you, it looks like you're unmuted.
Yep, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, easements are very difficult. Um, it's effectively selling rights of the property. So frankly, easements are not part of a proposed solution for us.
Okay, what about, um, are you able to get longer-term agreements for the other parking spots?
Um, yes, we would certainly extend those longer to two or three years.
I'm just going, let me see what else we have that came in that we can ask you about. Well, I think those are all the questions that came out of the discussion. Uh, thank you, Mr. Carlson. Does, does anyone else on the Planning Commission have questions for Mr. Carlson? Or do you wish to have a, a discussion among our members now?
This is Commissioner Agnew. I do just want to follow up to that last question that you had, Ian. Um, what is the reason for not considering a more long-term parking agreement, whether it's an easement or something longer term than two to three years, um, with even one of the properties such as the Gateway?
Um, great question. Uh, an easement, uh, is of utmost permanence in selling property rights in effect. And simply put, based on the fact that we're long-term owners and operators of property, both for Edina Gateway and for the Lorient 4500 France project, um, we don't want to do that. We don't believe it's necessary. Furthermore, we're, we're hopeful that one of the, um, consequences of this discussion today is that we can help be an advocate for providing some district parking and helping with this department beyond what we're already doing. So frankly, uh, we hope that the solutions we've got in place, A, are more than adequate, not only now, but in the medium term through length of agreements, and B, um, can help be a bridge to district parking.
That's all that I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you. What is this? Well, it, it's opportunity for the Planning Commission to have a discussion. Does anyone want to start it off? Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
I I have a, I have a question. Uh, would it make sense to just go one by one for this one? Since I think we did the last time, just to suggest.
Um, sure, I mean, you know, in any order, uh, that said, you know, people may wish to have, have, wish to respond. But Jimmy, do you have anything? I mean, uh,
Oh, yeah, I have a lot. I'm, I'm going to wait until, for hopefully other people to say some of it.
Okay, Chris has his hand in the air. Jerry has his hand in the air. So, uh, why don't we start with you two? Chris, why don't you start?
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to thank Mr. Carlson, um, for the work that he's done in responding to the concerns that the Planning Commission expressed, um, previously. And I also have read and listened to the resident and neighbor feedback, and I understand the concerns. And along the lines of our discussion in the last time we reviewed this, overall, I want to support this project. I appreciate the changes that have been made, reducing, um, the number of seats in the restaurant, the, uh, turning out from the garage or parking lot to try to prevent, um, traffic moving onto the residential street and some of the other efforts, including trying to secure parking. Where my greatest concern exists, maybe similar to others, which is that the variance, if granted by the City Council, and I, and I want to note for everyone, the Planning Commission doesn't actually approve the request or not. We simply make a recommendation to the City Council, who then ultimately decides. But where I have concerns in recommending approval without any conditions is the variance moves, goes with the land. And if parking is lost, there's a significant under-parking situation that could be long-term and cause a lot of problems for the neighborhood. I would be willing to approve this or recommend approval of this variance with the condition that a long-term easement be found, um, and entered into. And easements can be dissolved, just as they can be entered into by, by property owners. So while it's permanent up to a point, should conditions change in the future and the restaurant leave and the, the space be reused, the easements could also be terminated by the property owners of the parking stall and this building. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Ian, can I go?
Please.
Oh, okay. So when we looked at this, um, I, I did vote, um, to deny. And the, the central issue was, was the long-term parking. It was sort of that master plan for the, for the area. And that, that was, um, you know, that was critical. I, I think that's been, that hurdle has been not completely cleared, but that's well in motion. And I think, um, Orion heard that need for that master plan and are certainly have made these initial, um, you know, attempts to get that solution. And I think we found it, the, the, uh, his, his comment about long-term leases versus permanent easements also makes sense to me as the appropriate, uh, procedure to get, to get that parking, you know, assurance, long time. But what they've done, they've listened to the, to the concerns that we had. They reduced the size. Um, they, they made their best attempts at arranging for the necessary parking. They addressed traffic safety. Um, you know, so I think tho, those are covered. So I think they have, they, they have made that jump and I think I've, I've, uh, And I think I've, I've, and I want this project to succeed. And I think it is consistent with the comp plan and the small area plan. And I also thought the one caller about the facts being similar for the approval of the parking variance to the property itself just recently was an appropriate and valid point. So I've been convinced I, I do support the variances as requested. Thank you.
Sheila, you're, you're next on my screen. It's been asked that I go in order, and I see you on my screen next to Chris and Jerry. So.
All right. Happy to, happy to share some comments. So we reviewed this on February 12th and had a lengthy discussion about it. I was, I was one of two who voted to approve it. I felt that I needed to explain my thinking to the planning or to the city council. And so I wrote them a memo. And as I think about my comments tonight, they're basically the same comments. And so what I'd like to do is just take a minute and read this memo. I think it'll be more succinct than me actually talking from my scratched off notes from tonight. Here's the memo. At the planning commission on February 12th, we reviewed Orion's request for a variance to increase the seating capacity of the proposed restaurant at 44th and France. I voted to approve the variance. The planning commission as a whole denied it. As I will be out of town when it's scheduled to be on the city council agenda and won't be able to attend the meeting, I'm sending you this email to explain my opinion and why I voted as I did. What I aim to voice during the planning commission discussion was that I'm not opposed to the restaurant, even at a bigger size than originally planned, as I'd rather have a quality, family-oriented, although larger, restaurant than a smaller alcohol-oriented or fast food restaurant. My issue is with traffic and parking. We absolutely need to keep traffic away from the residential streets, and we need to keep business slash restaurant visitors from parking in front of homes in the neighborhood. I believe in this case, those objectives have fairly easy fixes. By negotiating with property owners across the street from the proposed restaurant, there's plenty of space, as demonstrated by the small area plan analysis, and implementing traffic controls such as raised areas, signs restricting turns towards the residences, I believe we can make this work. Also, we should be working with Hennepin County to coordinate the lights on France Avenue at Sunnyside and Morningside to keep traffic from backing up on France Avenue and to ensure those who speed and or roll through stop signs in the area are ticketed. I was formulating in my mind how to state a proposal that would accommodate these provisions when the motion was made to deny the variance. I wasn't ready to give up on the idea that with adjustments, we can make the variance attractive. However, in hindsight, I should have made a counterproposal to be more explicit that what, that I approved the variance, but only under the conditions that the parking and traffic issues are indeed addressed. As the planning commission acts in an advisory role to the city council, I believe that how we vote is less important than the points that come out during our discussions. A big part of our role is to bring out the pros and cons of different projects. As you watch the meeting, I'm confident you'll agree that parking and traffic are issues that need to be addressed. In fact, I would argue that for most of the attendees, the restaurant isn't the genuine issue at all. Indeed, regardless of the final decision on the restaurant, the parking and traffic issues likely will resurface with each proposed project in the area. It's time to address these issues. We have a charming, much-loved neighborhood node at 44th and France. We need to keep it vibrant, but also safe and walkable. Let's make safe parking and traffic a priority. So I reread this memo in preparation for this meeting, and I'd say the exact same things tonight. It's traffic, it's safety. There, there are some comments, there are some people who are not proponents of a bigger restaurant. I, as I mentioned, don't have a problem with that. I think it's important to point out, remind people that was pointed out that the Convention Grill is essentially the size that this restaurant would be. I don't think anybody thinks of the Convention Grill as a big restaurant. I, for those reasons, I guess I really applaud Ted for coming back. He clearly listened. He is trying to make accommodations. You know, the, based on the, the study done by our consultants, we're modestly underparked. Basically, one or two cars for an hour a night, which, you know, quite frankly, seems kind of silly. You, you know, as we say in the consulting world, you can be precisely inaccurate. So there's all kinds of assumptions that go into those parking studies and traffic studies. They're never exactly accurate. So to be rattled by one car for an hour each night just seems ridiculous. So I, I don't have a problem with this. I would vote to approve it. I think we can firm up the variance to, you know, make sure that things get done as we want them to get done. But I don't think we need to fear a restaurant with 100 seats as it's proposed. We do need to worry about traffic, we need to worry about safety, and we need to push the city council to work on consolidated parking. But I don't think we should hold up this project to do it.
Eva, anything further? Okay, so other commissioners who hasn't spoken yet, does anyone, anyone wish to speak?
Yes, this is Commissioner Agnew. Really just building off of what Sheila said, I think she did a really great job at that. So thank you, Sheila. I think it's clear that everyone involved wants this to be successful. Ted Carlson, he wants this restaurant to be successful. And if, if there isn't parking, people won't eat there. I know that one of the concerns is, you know, traffic in the residential areas. And I, I think what I even heard above and beyond that was the concern of safety. And I do agree that this is on the city to mitigate that concern if that is realized, and including the transportation commission. You know, it's, it's everyone, the city council. The data that we have at our fingertips doesn't suggest that substantial increase. And I think that the recent approval of the variance just to the south shows that there's potentially misalignment in what the ordinance requires or what the, the city requires for parking for these types of locations. And what we are realizing and seeing is the actual need here in 2020. But again, that's on us as a city to reevaluate and make sure that we, we have the right policies in place. So I too will be supporting this variance. And I think everyone else has really said it succinctly as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Lou or Jimmy, do either of you wish to speak? Jimmy?
Sure. Yeah, I'll, I'll be the first one to go, Lou. I'll save you the, I'll save you the vocal cords. Can you hear me? Okay, I shifted the speaker.
Yeah. You sound good.
I think on any of these big ones, it was easiest for me to kind of lay out some of the, the drawbacks and the positives, kind of talk through those. Some of them are repetitive, others aren't. But I think it's good to just revisit them, at least for me and for people listening to hear what is all going behind my decision. So I'm going to talk about those first and then hit on the questions that were answered and then kind of discuss the future. So the drawback, again, starting there, you know, the, the site of short parks. I mean, that, that is why the staff cannot support it. It violates, you know, our codes and ordinance, and that's what it is. Second, on top of that, the parking, you know, those 36 spots were sold to us when we approved this as district parking for other neighboring spots. The fact that those are overutilized and then you're tapping on other spots is, you know, counterintuitive to this being a good give-to-get, which one of the callers brought up. The inherent increase of vehicular traffic with more, you know, trips, I, I will agree is minimal, yet there will be new extra trips around the area to repark because when it's winter, people want to park undercover. So they're going to go to the undercover place first, and if there isn't a way for them to know it's full by like a digital sign, which I'm, I don't know if that will have it yet, they will have to then drive around. And that is inherently, you know, more tr, more, more traffic, more unsafe. The lack of transparency or permanency with some of these negotiations or agreements. And then lastly, really the potential burden to nearby neighbors as a result. So those were kind of like how I weighed the major drawbacks. And then there's a history on this because this has been, you know, an iterative process as we just keep chipping away at what we're getting from, you know, from the city perspective. So, you know, looking at the positives relative to the last time we talked, you know, the restaurant size decrease, I mean, it went from 110 to 100. I don't know if that's necessarily, you know, a positive, but it is from a parking demand standpoint. There are 43 stalls under lease agreements, whether or not we've seen them, that's what's been promised. There's a $7,500 allocation to a crosswalk. There's an additional four new stalls potentially available at the Gateway property, not discussed in any of these. The signage, I think that's a really good thing to have within the parking area. I also, you know, I'd like to see where that is. It'd be helpful if it was on the way out of the parking area that was more directionally, you know? So that's good. Compared to SPAC, consulting, data analysis, you know, all the restaurants they mentioned do not have 45 residential units on site. So there will be a relatively larger internal capture rate with this restaurant compared to others that were mentioned. I mean, that's just by nature. I think the biggest change, and I, along with Sheila, were, you know, was one of the two in support of the restaurant and the parking being under, you know, underparked, was this elimination of the left turnout. I think that, you know, traffic became such a big issue with the neighborhood, and that, that was evident in the 44th and France small area plan too. What can we do to make it safer for nearby residents? And that is, you know, encourage and direct cars out of the neighborhood. So having that is huge because when people go in there and the parking's full, they're going to leave and they're going to turn right. And so that traffic is mitigated away from the neighbors by nature of that. People are, you know, in the winter are going to try to park underneath a covered spot right next to the restaurant. When they go out, they will turn right. I think that is huge. And then positive for me, you know, and this is where I differ from others as well, like I believe a bigger restaurant is great for this area. Picturing 36, you know, having recently been in the Convention Grill before it shut down, you know, the family of five of mine, we take up a six-seat table, that would be a restaurant with six of those tables only. You know, 36-seat restaurant is tiny. I think something larger really helps achieve what's laid out in the small area plan, and that is these gathering places that we're desperate to have there. If you have a 36-seat restaurant, I don't think it's a gathering place more than it is a high-demand, hard-to-access environment. And we want this place to be accessible. A larger restaurant by nature accommodates families, such as my own, more easily. Most of my questions were answered. I think one of the final ones I have was, it was brought up about, and maybe this could be for Carrie to answer, signs in the neighborhood. I thought we talked about this. Could the city put up signs that say neighborhood residence only, others will be ticketed? Did this come up? You know, maybe not no parking, but at least as you're driving down Sunnyside, could that be put up on city right away?
It, it could be. It might be something for the traffic safety committee to take up. I know they consider requests like this and, and make recommendations. Ultimately, it's a city council decision, but that would be a possibility.
Okay, I guess that would be, you know, but between this, going to city council, it'd be nice for at least the applicant and/or the city to look into the feasibility of that because I think that would make residents more comfortable to as cars, which not as many will be coming down Sunnyside away from this restaurant when it's overparked, will still be met by and deterred by a sign such as that. I think that's helpful. Thank you, Carrie. All right, so like looking at the, my positives and drawbacks, you know, I, I also look to the future because the one thing that we know that's guaranteed about it is it's going to change. And so in my opinion, and this is where our discretion comes in, I believe people will drive less. Like we're already seeing this now and, you know, this restaurant option, like there's the ability to ride, chair, carpool, walk, bike, et cetera. And if people drive less, they park less. Second, I firmly believe, and this is laid out in the small area plan, that 44th and France needs to be focused around the pedestrian and cyclists and the safety of that. And this is not on the applicant to solve. This is on the city to orchestrate. And I think a lot of our angst here is it's such a big project and, you know, you can picture the effects of it, but it's really not the applicant's job to solve this. This is on, this is on the city and us encouraging the city to take the right steps to improve the streets, the sidewalks that, you know, they own technically on their, right away, and managing people and vehicles safely in an area. And that's, that's where we need to focus. And I think Commissioner Miranda pointed it out last time so well, you know, as it relates to this area, if we keep building infrastructure, AKA allocating the limited space we have for cars and for parking, people will use that space for cars and parking. So to me, like, if, if we're, if we're weighing things, I'd, I'd rather gamble on the side of not dedicating more space to cars. Okay, so a couple other things. 44th and France, like in the future, will need to have district parking. You know, if all that space was open to the north, you know, this is, we're fine because even though this is underparked, there's a place for people to go. We're not there, but that's what we imagined in the small area plan. We knew that years ago, nothing's changed. And personally, from a resident perspective, I'm still disappointed the city has made basically zero headway there. I mean, we knew this was key then. I, I don't think we have to wait for things, you know, over the course of years to be set in stone for us as city leaders to be bold and embark on what is right, you know, and just in forward thinking. So are we going to get that? I think it would require a miracle, and I think it's a miracle that's many, many years out. But whether or not the city is successful in that pursuit, in my opinion, there's a lot of things that the city can do. And so the crosswalks being one of them, we talk, you know, not just crosswalks, but flashing pedestrian-activated crosswalks, or even more, an elevated flashing crosswalk, something that, you know, maybe it's more of a nuisance for maintenance and, you know, snow removal. But when we weigh that against the safety of pedestrians and cyclists, in my opinion, you know, it's 100% worth it. And I think because this proposal includes a gift dedicated to that, I think we as residents have more fuel to fight for that as part of, you know, the evolution of this project and its restaurant. We should expect the city at the same time to be having a more safe set of crossings away from France to get across this commercial node. Second thing that the city could do, as I mentioned before, is signage. We could help jumpstart, you know, the business district and make, you know, easy directional signage for people and, you know, change it as the times change. And then lastly, you know, I have loved 44th and France for the last decade, and I will love it for decades to come. My family used to drive there, you know, but now we bike there, we walk there. And I believe that trend will continue. I, I know it will continue for my family. I believe that's going to continue for the rest of our neighborhood nodes similar to similar to Forty-fourth and France that we're so lucky to have. And I hope we see that shift, less focus on the automobile, less focus on parking and dedicating more space consequently to gathering in person, you know? We are going to do that again. Um, as mentioned by a caller, you know, we just made the decision to kind of take what we knew and technically, you know, approve a project based off of being underparked. And I think this is the same thing we're doing here. And like Sheila mentioned, um, my stance really hasn't changed since last time, but we have new data. And so our job is to like consider the data we have, adapt with that data and the times, and, you know, look toward the future of a better edina as our codes and ordinances unfortunately have to catch up. So as I look forward to the future of Forty-fourth and France for all these reasons, um, you know, I am in favor of this variance. Thanks.
Lou, you have anything?
No, I got nothing. No, no, I'm just kidding.
I was gonna say, thank you. Well, this is your time, Lou.
Sure, uh, well, I wanna, uh, thank the other commissioners who, uh, I largely agree with, and especially for Commissioner Bennett, who, um, really kind of explained a lot about what my thinking is and why, um, even though I, I love this project too, I voted against it twice, the original project, and then this parking variance, which seems totally crazy, but, um, because I do smile every time I go past, go past it because it's such a wonderful contrast to what was there before, you know, a chemical factory, basically. So, um, and I, so I did vote against this, uh, at our last meeting. And, uh, I wanna say that what has changed now is, um, as Commissioner Strauss has pointed out, and, and others too, is that, um, developer has suggested that they're gonna do, um, things like prevent a left-hand turn rather than just, you know, hope people do that, which doesn't work. Um, and then also-
So Lou, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Scott, Scott, are you on? Look, could you, Scott, Scott, are you on? Okay, I, I was losing everybody. I don't know if anyone else was. Lou, could you resume? It's, it seems you're working fine now. You started spinning, then a couple of other people started spinning though. So I don't know if everyone heard you.
Oh, yeah, that happened to me a lot last time, but this meeting's been pretty smooth. I am Comcast. Okay, so, uh, everybody hasn't muted me yet. So, so, uh, where was I? Um, so the developer has proposed, uh, doing a few things, which any one of them by themselves, I would not think would be sufficient at all. Um, but each one addresses a different aspect. Um, so for me personally, in terms of what I think the, the neighborhood needs most, you know, is, is safety, which was a huge thing at the Small Area Plan, which I was a member of. Um, other people are worried about, you know, people going, you know, into the neighborhood and too much traffic on the road and he's dressed that. So, so I think what it is, 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 um, and I do think he has listened to the neighborhood. I mean, I've been to, to most of those meetings that he's had. The original one before it even got, when, when the, uh, smaller area plan was still in, in progress, uh, he had a meeting back then on a very hot day, never forget it. And then I went to the most recent one at the Riveter, um, and people talked for hours and, and he listened. And, um, I think over time, he's developed, uh, a plan that, that I think better suits what, what the neighborhood is looking for. So is it gonna please everybody? No, of course not. But, you know, part of what, uh, Commissioner Bennett alluded to is, you know, we're, we're a planning commission, right? So, so we're not looking at history. We're looking at the future, right? What is, what is, what are we helping the city council to see about what the future of our great city is, right? And as, as Commissioner Bennett pointed out, you know, we're having a lot, there's a lot of turnover in the neighborhoods. We're having a lot of younger people moving in. These people have kids, they're on bikes, they've got cargo bikes, they're, they're biking all over the place. Um, cars have been huge, you know, that was the, actually it wasn't the foundation of a diner, it was kind of the second wave of, of a diner. The first wave of a diner was Morning Side, which was, uh, transit, actually. But then after that became the car. And I think that's turning, that tide is turning. And so for us to look at this strictly in terms of, you know, does it technically meet every single car parking spot for every hour of every day? Um, it, it's just a ludicrous way of looking at it, especially in, you know, the era of climate change. And so, um, I, I hated to vote against this project before because I, because I really like it and I really like the restaurant. I really want the restaurant to, to go there. Um, and it did not influence me in any way, but the restaurateur did bring food to the, the meeting at, at the Riveter, and it was quite good. Um, but, uh, you know, I think it would be a travesty for us to block this project based on the, the small number of spots that, you know, might be taken or would be taken, let's say, that would be taken on this, on the street. And we certainly want to, you know, minimize the movement of cars down Sunny Side in the, in the residential areas. We want to keep that traffic on France because that's what it is. It's a county road, that's where we want people moving. We, it is in everybody's best interest to get the traffic to keep, well, not just traffic, you know, transportation, you know, like the E-line, which is coming to, uh, France Avenue. Um, we want to keep that on France. We really don't want that on things. And I think there are things far more ambitious than a crosswalk that the city can do. Um, and part of the reason I voted against this before was to kind of prod the city council to say, you know, look, what we're doing as a city is not enough. And, um, the fact that, you know, the developer at least is listening, I don't know, maybe more than the city, um, and they're willing to contribute something to, uh, a crosswalk or some other infrastructure, um, that's for pedestrians and not for cars. Um, I mean, I think the whole segment of Sunny Side in the commercial area could be a, a boot nerf type of thing where, you know, you're, you're trying to keep cars as slow as possible on the street. Um, you know, that's what I think everybody wants. So because of the, what the developer has proposed, and because I, I love the project, I love the, the, the idea of a restaurant in the neighborhood, I would walk to it. I live, you know, half a mile away. Um, it's, it's just really, I think, what a diner needs, and I think it's what the Small Area Plan was really looking for in terms of vibrancy for the neighborhood. And so for that reason, I would, uh, I would definitely vote for this for the, for the first time. Thank you.
Thanks, Lou. Um, so I'll give a few thoughts, but then I wanna, I don't think my thing closes the discussion, so if anyone else has any other things to say after this, just let us know. Um, thank you, Mr. Carlson, uh, for your discussion, Mr. Moreland. Uh, Kerry's staff did a great job in taking through this. I know you've worked really hard on this, uh, commissioners, uh, got a lot of great feedback from the residents. Uh, I, I, I kind of feel bad for the residents because several of them have felt like they've had to give the same feedback repeatedly, which is, which is something I've heard, not just for this project, but for several other projects. And I'd, I, if there's one thing I'd like to figure out is how we can handle that because I don't think that that does us well in terms of building, uh, community trust with how we make decisions. When residents feel like they give their feedback and decisions are made, and then it comes, the, the issue comes up again and they feel like they have to come again and they, um, I, 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 that came up a lot in the comprehensive planning process and, and in some of my sma- in some of the small area plans I worked on, where residents basically said it was, it was the how we were doing things that were causing distrust as much as the what. Um, and so I, I am concerned about that. Uh, that said, the residents made a lot of good points and I thank them for it. Uh, a couple ground things, um, in my consideration of this, I don't give any consideration to the restaurant being Tinto. I consider it a restaurant. Restaurants come and go, it could be any restaurant. Um, and I think a lot of people, when they come to the, we've seen, we've seen comments in favor of this because of the type of bad restaurant that can go in there if we don't do it and people in favor because they think Tinto's good. But I'll tell you, you know, we only need a little bit of an economic change in our society, one of which I think we're kind of going through, but we haven't quite realized it yet. Um, where the economics of restaurants change and the type of restaurants and how they do things, uh, change significantly. So, um, I don't necessarily have any stars in my eyes about having Tinto here. Uh, I, the parking, I, I think if we were to move forward, I think that they, there has to be an easement and it can't be a, uh, one that you can do away with. Has to be an easement agreed upon with the city for those other fifteen spots. I think this is a non-starter without it. I think the agreements with the other sites need to be five years, um, to give a runway to build the district parking. I don't, I think district parking is a moonshot that, um, I think it's a moonshot. I, I think it's a difficult thing. I think, I think district parking would be a difficult thing in good economic time. And I think, uh, as we've been communicated to by the city manager, at least if you get the city communications, that there's concerns that we're entering into a tighter economic time, which I think is gonna make it harder. It's not gonna make it easier to get the district parking, uh, from the city perspective. Now that said, you know, maybe bad economics will make landowners more amenable to figuring something out that could be beneficial commercially to the, to the district. So it's, it's kind of hard, you know? You're gonna be hurting a lot of different e- people with different diverse economic interests, uh, who don't, aren't used to working collectively. Uh, and it's probably gonna be a, a, a reconfiguration of people's land. And there's gonna be cost for leveling and lowering and raising land and it, it, it's gonna be hard. So I think it's gonna take five years probably, and so I would like to see those easements. I mean, the easement on the, uh, with the, uh, property immediately south, it needs to be a permanent easement with the city. Of course, the city could agree to waive it if the right situation comes up, but the other sites need to be five years. I don't know if those really solve it. Um, anyways, because I think human nature isn't necessarily gonna work to go to those spots, but I do think the applicant heard what we said last time and made a very good faith effort to try to answer what was said and came up with these other spots. Um, regarding the parking, um, I, I think there's a couple of things I think about. One is the city has its ordinances, and right or wrong, uh, they are the city's ordinances. I, I, I've never been a fan of changing regulations at the evening of a meeting. Um, I'm a big fan of changing regulations and figuring out, hey, we need to work on regulations and maybe we need to work harder to change regulations. But I, I'm always concerned when you do it the night of a meeting, um, I think you make mistakes. And I think, I think you, uh, you make changes in a hurry and then you repent at leisure, to kind of paraphrase the old saying. Um, so I'm concerned about, I, I didn't see, I have not been persuaded that, by the parking studies. I, 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 I don't get the numbers and I, I kind of get them and, but I, I, I just, different things are measured at different times. I would have supported this, uh, two years ago. I was a strong opponent of a restaurant two years ago. I would, probably would have supported it two years ago. But I think the deal was done two years ago and I'm a big fan of living with what you agreed. It was a very big issue for the city two years ago and I, I, I would live with it. I think there's a big difference between this project and the one at forty-five thirty-two as I, I agree with Kerry. I mean, it's all on site and we had real-world experience to, to, to sup- support the decision about what was going to be needed. This is projections and the projections are really iffy. I mean, there's a lot of things that can change. Uh, if they do a big takeout, if they do a big takeout business, which probably is going to be a trend going forward. Right now, by the way, the hottest restaurant in that neighborhood is probably Hello Pizza, which is a very small restaurant and their business is takeout. And takeout is going to be a, a bigger slice of the restaurant industry, at least for the next twelve to twenty-four months. Um, I mean, I don't wanna bet you a lot of money on it, but that is my projection. And so takeout is gonna drive a lot more traffic. And it's gonna be hidden, it's gonna be in and out. And it's gonna be people parking on the street and running in and getting their stuff and going. So, um, I don't support this for those reasons. I would have supported it two years ago. I would support it if there was a better thing on district parking, if we had better visibility in district parking. I would support it when there was infrastructure developed for, when the E-line comes through and we, and we figured out something better on, uh, parking, I mean, pedestrian and bike. Uh, if it does go forward though, I, 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 I strongly recommend that there be an easement with the, uh, property to the south and that the other parking spaces, which I don't think would be that used, but I would still make them a five-year deal. Just think, just so there are a safety valve to, that they are needed and that we have runway to get the district parking done. Um, so that's, that's, that's where I stand. Does anyone else have anything further that they'd like to share? Oh, Lou, you got it.
Okay, well, I, I didn't speak to the easement. Um, I, I think the easement is a bad idea. I would be against this for having a, a, an easement, simply because I just don't think parking is a big enough problem with this particular project. Um, and the, the, you know, community parking, uh, the shared parking, that was a, you know, was a big part of the Small Area Plan. Um, I think because of reasons that I discussed, that that's, well, it might be important, it's less important than it was a few years ago. Because I think things are changing and the world is changing. And we have to be leaders in this. And I think, uh, you know, could, you know, we look at the, um, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not sure if it's the right term, but I think it, it is an easement that they have at Fiftieth and France, where there's this strip of land that's, uh, between the property, the homeowners and the, and the, um, the bank. And that one is in perpetuity, you know? And so now we've got this strip of land that, you know, in the seventies, it was important that people be protected from businesses or whatever. Um, but now in perpetuity, which just boggles my mind, that land cannot be used for anything. It can't even be used for a park. So, you know, you talk about not wanting to make these rash decisions during a meeting. I think, you know, something like this could go wrong pretty easily and make a better decision that maybe we think is good today, but ten years from now, people will regret. So, so I'm, I'm really not a fan of that.
Thanks, Lou. Anyone else? Kate, Kate, or Jimmy, did you have anything?
Yeah, just a one, one question. I, I mean, we're in disagreement here, which is fine, but at least for the, you know, the look for long-term negotiations. I mean, the five-year commitment, if paid, is, you know, a huge expense to, you know, the applicant if after a year or two or three, they're not used at all. So I would, I would just, I don't know. If, if it ever goes down that path, I mean, I don't need to see it, but, you know, we've already reacted to new data, like we made the decision on, uh, you know, two properties to the south. So maybe it's something that's revisited after each year, you know, or every couple of years or whatever. Just five years is a long time for someone to pay for something that might not be used at all. Is, is the only thing I would caution us against recommending.
Okay, thanks, Jimmy. Anyone else have anything? Sheila, Chris? Jerry? Okay, uh, does anyone have a motion?
Are, are we, are we at the point where we're motioning for or against?
If you like, and if anyone else has anything else to say. I mean, I'll just say one thing. I wouldn't judge easements by one easement. I mean, they're, you know, but yeah, any, if there's any motion. We can, or we can have a further, we can still have a discussion of people, other things they'd like to ask or discuss.
I, I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the variance. Um, I guess I'd like some help making sure that we incorporate everything that the committee wants, the commission wants to put in there um as far as firming up the expectations on um the lengths of the parking and the signage and that sort of thing.
Well, Sheila, why don't you make the motion that you're comfortable with and, and suggest things? Uh, start with, start with Kerry's and then, you, you know, then we can amend it or?
I move, I move that we approve the motion as stated in the staff document with the conditions stated in the staff document. Um. Just got my notes to make sure, make sure there wasn't anything else I wanted to add.
I would just add that it's condition number two that it's very vague the way it's written about a continuation of a provision of adjacent off-street parking stalls to cover the shortage of onsite parking at forty-five hundred France. That might be the one that you might want to look at and um tweak in regard to some type of an agreement or I, I just offer that for discussion.
So you've received two written documents, two signed documents stating a year from the date the restaurant opens that will be uh parking allowed. Is that correct?
Correct. And you, and you heard from the applicant saying he's willing to go to two or maybe even three on his property to the south?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so let's firm up that point and say um contingent on the points as stated in the staff document and for point number two, um with um written document, written and signed documentation, um.
Or a parking agreement um to cover the shortage of parking?
For a parking agreement to cover the shortage of parking um for a minimum of one year.
I second.
Okay, I want to point, I, I want to point one thing out. Uh, this is just a small, in the, in the staff memo on the approval uh needs to be a change for this motion because it refers to the Lake Area Mason Lodge or, you know, Masonic Lodge. Uh, that probably needs to be removed from the approval.
Yes, so that, that's within the findings. We would want to strike all references to providing parking on those sites.
On that particular site.
I'd like to just comment quick. Uh, I would strike the one year. I think, you know, if, if there, if parking is an issue and somehow, you know, grows to beyond, I wouldn't want to like now after one year, you know, that condition is not upheld. So I would remove a timeframe.
Okay, hold on. Um, so Sheila's, hold on that thought, Jimmy. So Sheila's made a, a motion with a one-year minimum. Sheila, are you okay with that, like formality change I suggested?
Repeat what your suggestion was.
I'm just saying take out references to the Lake Area Mason Lodge.
Yes, yes, yes. And, and um I'm okay taking out for the one year. We need something in writing. And we need, we need to have those in hand. But I don't know that I don't know that we need to say one year. I, I agree. Maybe a, a timeframe isn't necessary.
So the motion is to follow the staff's resolution, but ha- ha- get written agreements for the, the additional parking spaces.
Mm-hmm. And take out the Masonic Lodge.
Take out the Masonic Lodge. Katie, are you, you're the, me the second. Are you good with all that? You still second?
I yes, I do still second. Um, I think that if, if I were to consider like a what is it, a subsidiary motion? I'm not up to my Roberts rules of order. Um, but one thing that I think of is just the parking that exists within the development today, the thirty-sixth, plus the fifteen that's at the Gateway Bank brings us really, really close. And so I don't know that I need this for me to approve it to be dependent on having signed agreements with the dental, with the other places that were itemized out there. Um, and so I don't know if that's worth having a, a subsidiary motion to amend that or, or what people are thinking about that.
Well, the motion that was made, the mo- hold on, Kerry, oh Kerry, you want to say something?
Yeah, if I could chime in, I think that's a really good point. So we've got the, the parking study that says the restaurant and the retail space can be accommodated by providing fifty-three parking stalls. So we're seventeen stalls short. Those seventeen stalls can all be accommodated on the property to the south. So those other in terms of meeting what the parking study is saying, they're saying that they're short seventeen stalls. So you could be specific in even providing that number. If that helps.
But Ian, did I, did I break the motions and stuff?
Well, let's, let's discuss that because I, I didn't, I carry, I maybe not understood you. The motion that I believe Sheila made was to follow the staff report, take out the Lake Area Masonic Lodge and have agreements with the places for parking. And that's when you additionally, initially seconded, but if you don't want to second that particular motion, that's fine. And we'll come to your, we'll have a discussion later about the motion that was made because you sound like you don't agree to part of the motion, which is fine. So, I mean, does anyone else want to second that motion? And then we can discuss it. No one else wants to second it? Sheila, it's your motion. What, what do you wish to do?
Well, I mean, I can't second it. What can I do? I guess, I guess then we, if, if no one's gonna second it, then we move on and have another motion.
Okay, does anyone else wish to make a motion?
So I guess that's off the table and then we go with Kate's motion. That's mine.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else wish to make a motion?
So yes, I will move to approve this variance as outlined in the staff report. Um. With just the agreement with um the gateway bank. For the extra part, the additional parking.
And taking out the Lake Area Masonic stuff.
Correct.
Okay.
And not having any time, time bound.
Okay. Does anyone wish to, so Kate has made a motion to follow the staff report, take out the Lake Area Masonic and have an agreement with Gateway for parking. Does anyone wish to second that motion?
Second.
Okay. Does anyone have any further, they'd like to discuss? Anyone wish to offer any amendments or or any further discussion? Okay, Liz, back to you. Will, will you do a roll?
Yes, thank you Chair Namarov. Commissioner Douglas.
Nay.
Commissioner Agnew.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett.
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Berube.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Chair Namarov.
Nay. So the motion passes. Kerry, does this go to the next immediate uh council meeting?
It does. It will go to the city council meeting on May fifth. Or the public hearing. What the council has been doing is holding the public hearing and then taking action at the meeting following.
Okay. Well, Mr. Carlson, Mr. Morland, thank you very much for hanging with us tonight. Uh, I hope we gave the viewing audience, you know, a, a good program, entertaining program. So thank you. That, that concludes the public hearing portion of tonight's planning commission meeting. And uh we move on to reports and recommendations. Do we have any?
We do not.
Uh, that takes us to correspondence and petitions. Do we have any of those?
We do not.
Number eight is chair and member comments. Do any members have any comments?
Okay, I have one as chair and that is about um work sessions. So uh, and I have two comments there. One is I, we're still planning to have a, a work session at the end of May, I believe, regarding the ordinances, the, the ordinance amendments that we discussed. And I think it's important that we address those sooner than later. Even as you can tell tonight, there's a lot of, we, we have a lot of issues regarding ordinances. And so I think uh it'd be better for the city if we could come to some recommendation about ones to change sooner than later and in, instead of addressing them um just in the breach. So hopefully we can have a meeting and address those ordinances and decide what we want to do with them. Second, similarly, I'd like to ask all of you to send me and Kerry your suggestions for other work session items. We have a lot of discussion meeting uh items tonight, last meeting about things, various people say, well, you know, this is something we should address. And we can use work sessions to address those. So if you think there's an issue that we should be thinking about or changing, that I would think that a work session would be a good opportunity to do so. And so I encourage you to email Kerry and me with your ideas of things. We, we might, we might or might not address them, but it would give us all more time to address them. We could form small groups to take deeper dives into them too. Um, but if you have anything, you know, they can, and this has come up my whole tenure on the planning commission. Um, it'd be good to try to address them in work sessions when we can really have a, a nice full discussion. Uh, does anyone else have any chair or member comments?
I do.
Okay.
Just to keep this brief, but I, I wanted to express my gratitude toward, you know, the staff just for, you know, for all the items tonight. They did an awesome job and they continue to kind of be the, the first interface between, you know, these changes that are proposed and then what ends up getting proposed in public. They, they do a lot of things. I just want to thank them. I want to also thank all of the residents that, and I, I didn't do this while we discussed the last project, but really want to express my gratitude to all residents who continue to watch these meetings and or opine during them or be involved in some way with the city and helping us, you know, change it toward the future. Um, it's, it's awesome that we had people calling in and I just hope we continue to do that even during these challenging times. And then lastly, I just want to thank all of you guys for everything you do. I mean, there's beautiful nights that could be had and you're all volunteering for the city and I think that it's a wonderful thing. And I don't know, it's maybe just taking a step back and reflecting more as of late, but I think you all rock. So just want to tell you all that on record.
Thank you. Everyone, anyone, anything further? That brings us to uh, uh Kerry and the staff comments. Kerry, do you have anything?
Yeah, I, I don't have anything other than we will try to get that um meeting, the work session set up for your second meeting in May, which is May twenty-seventh and we can dive into the ordinance discussion that we started a month or two ago. Um, and we'll bring in engineering staff. You had a lot of questions in regard to the stormwater. So that'll be the plan for the work session.
Okay. Uh, Kerry, can you give a brief update on the comp plan?
Oh, yes. Um. Thank you for asking that. We did just receive a letter from the Met Council. I guess it was earlier this week, maybe late last week. They have um finally considered the, the plan complete and it's in review and on their docket for June review and approval. So it goes before a couple of committees, June first, the Community Development um committee, and there's an environmental review a week or two later, followed by the full um Metropolitan Council review on June twenty-fourth. So if all goes well, we could have our approval on the twenty-fourth of June.
Thanks Kerry. Any, any, anyone have questions for Kerry? Kerry, is there anything that the planning commission will need to do?
Not at this point. Um. I'm not sure there's anything. At this point, they haven't said staff needs to be there or our consultants need to be there. So it's pretty much handled by Met Council staff. So the next step, assuming that it would be approved by the Met Council, would be we would bring it to the city council and they would adopt a resolution putting it into effect.
That's great. That's great. Anything else, anyone?
So uh Kerry, are we getting more or less now with, with the economy and COVID and all that sort of stuff? How, how are things looking for development this year compared to previous years?
Yeah, I, there seemed to be a slowdown when, you know, right at first when City Hall uh closed. But just within the last few days, I've had several inquiries from developers about potential projects that, you know, I don't know for certain they'll come forward, but um I think they may. So it seems to be heating up just within the last few days. We don't have a lot of items for your next agenda. Um, but we are anticipating uh pickup in the, in the near future here.
Great, thank you.
Anything else, anyone? Well, that brings us to the adjournment portion of our agenda. Does anyone have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Liz, I, I, guys, I got called on the carpet for this. I, I thought I wasn't gonna be, can you do a roll? We can't do a voice. We've, Liz, all yours.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas.
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett.
Absolutely aye.
Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Berube.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
I said nay. No, I.
Chair Namarov.
Well, uh, first, I, I thank you everyone for great discussions. This is really hard and was a, but I think everyone did a wonderful job concerning every issues and I vote aye on adjournment. So good luck and have a good week and hope you all stay healthy.
Goodnight.
Thanks, everyone.